All right, everybody ready? Are you ready? Okay. All right, I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting of July 1st, 2025. Before the roll is called, I'd like to note that Councilmember Pascal is joining us remotely this evening. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Felkone.
Here.
Councilmember Pascal.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Here.
Mayor Curtis.
Here. All right, our study session tonight is on two items. First, we'll have a discussion on the responses to the Houghton Village request for proposals. Second, we'll receive an update on the Kirkland Safety Action Plan and speed limit setting policy. We expect to reconvene our regular meeting at 7:30. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. So yes, we have about 45 bands for each topic. You're going to hear from two presenters tonight. We are going to have some time for questions following each presentation of the presenters, but we're also going to reserve some time after both of them to ask questions about other options and questions you may have going forward. So with that, I want to go ahead and turn over to Allison Zeig, our Deputy Director of Planning and Building, to kick us off.
Thank you, City Manager, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. As City Manager mentioned, the layout for tonight, I have just a few slides to kind of lay the groundwork, remind you where we're at on the Houghton Village project, and then we'll move forward and let you hear from our proposers. So presenting first tonight from the proposers is, will be Inland Group and the Together Center. They're represented by Joey Lonsford tonight. And then we'll have a presentation from Imagine Housing in Methune, and they're represented by Yi Zhao and Casey Wong tonight. So I'll let them reintroduce themselves as they come up. We'll be playing a little bit of musical chairs, but should be a fun time. So just to remind you all kind of where this all started, in 2022, the city purchased the Houghton Village property to help realize council's vision for public purposes. And the priorities we've heard from council on this project were affordable housing, potentially school space, nonprofit program space, neighborhood shops, vibrant retail, the potential for arts and cultural space, and maybe city recreational space. I think councils acknowledge we might not be able to get all of those things, but those were really kind of our guiding light as we worked through the development plan over the past year or so. And then also the things that we talked to the community about, about potentially getting at the Houghton Village site. It's what we asked the proposers to kind of respond to as they looked at the site. So we last talked to you about this project in January when you directed staff to go ahead and issue a request for interest or a request for proposals to really gauge from the development community. Is there anyone out there that's interested in partnering with the city to make this vision happen? And so staff did move forward with that. We issued a request for proposals back in March. During while the proposal or the RFP was open, we held an information session to help people understand what we were really looking for. The RFP closed on June 2nd. We did receive four submittals. Three were full proposals in response to the RFP. One was a letter with an explanation of why that team chose not to submit, but what might encourage them to submit at a future time, what additional information they might need that could can make them submit at a future time. In May, the city did receive an appraisal for the property, so an updated appraisal for the property, it was appraised at $16.5 million. It is worth noting that that appraisal was only for up to three stories of height. As I understand it, we're getting an update to that appraisal to see what it would be appraised at for the full five stories of height that could be allowed there. Just a little bit more about what was in the RFP. We did cover this with council in January, but to remind you, over the past year and a half, staff has been working with a consultant to develop kind of a development framework for the site. And so we did that to figure out how many, how many units and what kinds of community or commercial space the site could yield to get an idea of what might be possible there. So we've dug into that. We also did a lot of community engagement associated with that development framework. And so that was the document that we included in the RFP and asked proposers to respond to. So we didn't bind them to it. We said, we want to see something that's generally consistent, but we put a lot of flexibility in the RFP and invited proposals that might have an idea for the site that was only three stories or had maybe a different vision for community benefits than what council had laid out. And so it was really flexible and really open to try to get as many ideas as we could for what might work there for individuals or individual teams. And then I've repeated just the RFP schedule here. So of the three proposals that we got, this was also included in your packet, so I won't go over it in detail. But from the two teams that you're going to hear from tonight, we'll note that what they put in their proposal is pretty aligned with the development framework in terms of number of housing units, high levels of affordability, ample commercial or community space on the ground floor, and they also included some estimated budgets. I'm going to let them go over that with council during their presentations. And then I'll take this moment to note that the third proposal, which was from a senior housing developer, they have withdrawn from consideration at this time. So the proposal was included in your packet, but they are not here tonight. So with that, we're going to have the team start their presentations and have some time for council to ask questions of each proposing team after they present. And then after both teams have gone, staff might be, will be looking for some information from council as to what additional information you might need before you make a decision about the future of the property. So we can wrap up with that at the end. And barring any immediate questions for staff, we'll go ahead and invite the first team up.
Go ahead.
All right, so first we'll have the team from Inland Group come up. So I'm going to switch over to their presentation if you'll just give us a moment.
And while we're waiting, I do want to thank both teams for putting forward a proposal. We appreciate it.
Do I need to? Okay, probably don't need to speak too hard into this. Nice to meet everyone. I'm going to keep this short because I know we have only 10 minutes. There we go. How's that? I'll keep the intro short because I'm sure you've read the proposal, but my name is Joey Lonsford. I'm a developer with the Inland Group. We're based out of Spokane, Washington. We're a developer and builder of affordable housing. We've done most of our work over here. I live over here. I'm kind of the resident Seattleite of the Inland Group, so I'm very familiar with development over here. And yeah, I just want to thank you all for the opportunity and thank you for taking action. It's always refreshing to see cities do their part in ensuring opportunities are out there where they otherwise wouldn't be. So I'm going to get into our presentation. I'm just going to briefly highlight our proposal and then open for questions after that. So our vision here, again, reviewing the RFP, we think this is a great fit for our product, our mid-rise product. What we're going to do here is maximize the amount of units that we can put on this site without sacrificing efficiency and also quality for our residents. So initial thoughts are 140 to 175 units of affordable housing. All will be restricted to 60% AMI and below is what we currently have modeled. For reference, in King County, 60% AMI for four-person households is around $95,000 a year. So this is truly a workforce housing. Our ground floor space will be entirely commercial. It will be a mix, and we need to do obviously some research and some, we need some community feedback on what that would be, some nonprofit space, some community space for our residents, some neighborhood retail as well. And then the structure itself, we're contemplating two kind of five-story towers with some shared parking space underneath. And then in between those two towers will be a plaza for connecting like to the area. So it will be a public plaza connecting to the Kirkland Cross Corridor. That's what we have contemplated, again, very high level at this point. And you know, we're familiar with the Kirkland Design Review Process and the building permit process, having just gone through it, and I'll touch on a couple of our projects that we've recently done. But we realized that we're still very conceptual in this process here. So our team here, our model, our partnership model that we call it for affordable housing, we're the developer and we're the builder, and we've been the long-term owner historically. That started to shift a little bit, and I can touch on that if you'd like. We are partnering here and we're excited to partner with, and unfortunately, Kim is out of town, with the Together Center Redmond. We completed a project a couple of years ago, the Polaris at Together Center Campus. For those of you who don't know who the Together Center is, it's a, you know, a one-stop-shop of nonprofit spaces, and we had an opportunity to do a very exciting project there in Redmond where we're co-locating nonprofit spaces and affordable housing. So we're partnering here with Together Center in a little different aspect. They'll kind of be our liaison for different nonprofit spaces in the ground floor. It won't be a complete rinse and repeat of the Together Center, but we thought this was a great opportunity to get them involved, get their local expertise. We'll also partner with a community benefit organization. They'll direct our community engagement process. We've been running a community engagement process on our East King County projects over the last couple of years, just to ensure that we have local expertise on what the community, the surrounding community needs, and also what our future residents need. So that'll kind of be the team for our, for our development here. So I mentioned 100% affordable, mix of nonprofit, community space, amenity space for our residents, and then some neighborhood retail on the ground floor, open plaza connecting the street and cross Kirkland Corridor. So again, this will be, the goal is for this to be kind of fit seamlessly into the surrounding area. There's no fences, no separate space, so this outdoor space is meant to be shared with, with the surrounding community. Quick timeline, so if awarded, the rest of this year will be intensive planning and prepping for financing applications. All of our, I'm going to, I'll get to our financing structure here, but that will be the rest of this year with the major financing awards coming in spring of 2026. Upon award, we dig, we go full speed ahead on entitlements and permitting with the goal of that taking anywhere from six to 12 months, and then we break ground. 24-month construction process, lease-up begins about eight months prior to construction being done, and the way that these have been leasing up in East King County, a pretty short lease-up and operation. So end of 2029, early 2030 would be the start of this project if awarded and beginning right away. Our funding stack, this is how we have funded the majority of our East King County deals over the last couple of years. All of our affordable projects are financed with the 4% Lytec and Tax Exempt Bond Program through the Washington State Housing Finance Commission. We have a lot of close relationships at Arch. They funded multiple deals with us over the last five years. Evergreen Impact Housing Fund is a low-interest-rate loan program funded by the Washington State Housing Finance Commission. We've utilized that program on three deals in the last two years. And then the remainder of the stack will be developer equity and deferred development fee. And so that'll be our, that's our funding stack. It's kind of important to note here, and I think Allison popped it up on the screen, our budget for this, you know, very conceptual pricing budget based on what we're actually experiencing in the Kirkland market right now is 90 million for 175 units. That included, so of the, I think we had a $14 million land price, we discounted that land price to $7 million. That was based on, we didn't know what the full strategy was for the city of Kirkland, and so we assumed a 50% land discount. That also assumes $2.75 million from Arch, which we've received more than that in the past. We don't have any commitments from them right now other than relationships, and they're aware that we're going in on this project. But that was $2.75 million from Arch and $9 million from Evergreen Impact Housing Fund and was based on a conceptual budget. And so that's all up in the air. That is all, you know, can be ironed out, and based on what the city's priorities are, we can ask for more dollars from other public funders, we can dial in our construction pricing, we can structure any sort of ground lease program, we can look at, you know, installments to pay back the land price. It really just depends on what the priorities are for the city of Kirkland. So I did want to just point that out as we're talking about a $90 million conceptual budget. So again, can answer any questions on that as we, after the presentation. So anyway, that's our, that's our model, that's our project team. I'll talk about a couple of projects that we've done because this model works, and so, and it's worked very recently even in the city of Kirkland. So all these are East King County deals. First one, Capella to Sterrett Park, 260 units, ranging from 30 to 60% AMI. There's an early learning center in the ground floor. We've had early learning centers have been, they're great compatible use with our product. Together Center Redmond, I mentioned that earlier, this is one of our crown jewels here. Together Center approached us, or approached the public with an opportunity to redevelop the Together Center campus, and the co-location of services of nonprofits that serve our residents underneath housing has been just a fantastic model, and, and we'd like to replicate that as much as possible. And so, yeah, Together Center Redmond, Polaris at East Gate. We not pictured here above, there is a men's shelter as well as a permanent supportive housing campus. Our portion of the project, so we developed the whole thing with Plymouth Housing and Horizon Housing Alliance, and, and so it was a great partnership model here, all-in, you know, 360 units of affordable, 50 to 6% AMI, and then the men's shelter and a permanent supportive housing project. Again, good example of co-development, and again, YMCA early learning center on this campus as well. And then closest and down, somewhat down the street, down, down 405, Polaris to Totum Lake is under construction. This is 442 units. I worked on this project as co-developer with John Fisher, who couldn't be here tonight. But this is 142 units of market rate housing with 300 units of affordable housing as well. We worked with Hope Link on this. They were our community benefit organization, and they also provide services on site. Construction is going very smoothly. We're ahead of schedule. We're turning over our market rate portion this August, and then affordable is on track to turn over ahead of schedule in Q2 of 2026. So these are just some great examples. Polaris to Totum Lake went through the design review process, the design review board, so we're familiar with it, very similar team, and so that's, that's what we're gearing up for here, is a very similar kind of style with similar articulation and facade, and we have some interior court roads here as well, so maybe a little different, it's a little more closed off than we would be on this site, but yeah. So that's kind of the, that's a rerun of the proposal. What we're really promoting is our efficiency and our ability to execute. If you look at our track record, that's what we do best. We're efficient. We make the public's dollar go the longest way. That's what we pride ourselves on, and you know, we're excited to do it here. So I'd also want to throw out that we'd be happy to coordinate a tour of any of our existing properties. It's hard to sell at, at the table here, and so yeah, we'd be happy to coordinate that. So anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your work in this space.
Yeah, no problem.
Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Joey. Thanks for the presentation. Thanks again, like the mayor said, thanks for submitting and putting the effort into this project. And I have toured, I think several of us have toured your project at Together Center. So we've seen the nonprofit space, we've seen the housing, and a ton of people I know in Redmond are extremely, both the community and from the city of Redmond are really proud. in Redmond are extremely, both the community and from the city of Redmond are really proud of that project in their city, and it is exciting in many ways. Couple of questions for you, so, and these are in no particular order, and they're not all related, and they're not meant to be gotcha questions, I really just curious.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, you answered the first one, which I was kind of curious about the amount and nature of the subsidy that your project, your proposal might be expecting from the city. I think you answered that, at least preliminarily, you're imagining 50% land discount.
That was what we threw together.
Okay, so the numbers are, okay. And, and you emphasized that there's more to be ironed out there, and there's no doubt there'll be more to be ironed out there. I'm interested in the, the neighborhood retail component on the ground floor. So I kind of have two related questions, three related questions, actually. So, curious about, at the Together Center, for example, which is the one I know best, there's, we don't, I don't recall there being any ground floor retail. Is that something that, that you or your partners have any experience with is that ground floor retail? And I guess this relates a little bit to the question of who's going to be the long-term property manager of this site? Will it be someone who does have that experience leasing, you know, identifying leasing and retaining neighborhood-type retail? Can you, yeah?
So, Together Center was, was more of an anomaly because it was a redevelopment of their existing campus. So we've, we've done projects with plenty of ground floor commercial space, coffee shops, barber shops, pharmacies, not, not just early learning centers and not just very compatible uses with our, with our residents. Not that, you know, retail isn't compatible, but it's, sometimes, you know, a couple of our projects are strictly early learning center or, you know, a services suite for our residents. We've done plenty of projects with actual true retail. We've leased those. I wouldn't say that we are expert commercial lease, you know, leasing agents. So we've historically leased those, and, you know, it's, it's gone well. We've never had a trouble, you know, finding, you know, spots. I mean, when you have 300 units above you, there's typically a good customer base. But to, you know, as far as long-term ownership goes, you know, we recently partnered with April Housing, I mentioned them in our proposal, they're, they're an affordable housing management. I can't speak to it, although I would be shocked if they're not much more experienced than us. They have more units under management. They recently acquired a couple of our properties that have these spaces, so I would assume that they're probably more experienced than us, but we've, we've leased out, you know, like I mentioned, coffee shops, restaurants, and so that's, as far as who goes in there, we would like to lean on the community a bit in our community engagement process on, it's not just for our residents, it's for what does this area, what does this area need? And that'd be part of that process as well, is early on trying to identify and trying to lease up, you know, even pre-construction. So we definitely would be involved in that under development.
Okay. And then we're closely related to that, you talked about a couple of different ground floor uses, including some space for residents, nonprofit space. We see that at Together Center and this commercial space. Do you have any sense, and you, you said that it's, hey, everything's conceptual right now, but do you have a sense of like what the orientation of these different ground floor uses would be on the site? As far as orientation into the courtyard, orientation toward the, the main arterial, do you have any sense of that?
Other than conceptually, you know, highlighting the, the more neighborhood retail on the, on the more prominent arterials and then, you know, resident amenity space opening up to the courtyard? That was the vision, it wasn't, again, high-level vision was that. Now, would that make sense? Maybe, maybe not. Maybe there would be a neighborhood retail that is like, wait, actually, that, that courtyard is a special community plaza I want to face there. And so we haven't gotten to that point, I think we'd get there in design, but I think there's definitely some creative opportunity to do, not just your traditional, we're going to throw our neighborhood retail on the corner, put the amenities in the back near the corridor, I mean, near the, near the plaza. I think there's ability to be creative and create something special.
Yeah, it sounds like there's going to be some thought and creativity put into that, so I appreciate that. Last question, in your financing stack, it wasn't, there's no obvious exposure to federal funding and the, the risks we, you know, a lot of organizations and governments are experiencing with reliance on federal funding. I didn't see any of that. How would you characterize your exposure to federal funding risk?
I, you can never guarantee anything right now. However, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program has been one of the most heralded programs on both sides of the spectrum. Recently, it was actually, I think in the big beautiful bill, there was a proposal to drop the 50% test to 25%, which basically, in theory, should actually increase the usage in the program. So, I think we're not so worried about the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. This project doesn't have any HUD dollars in it, any vouchers contemplated, and so, relatively speaking, I would say that our federal funding in this is all through the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, and we feel pretty confident in that going forward.
Good, thanks, Joey, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Swinton, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you, Joey, for the presentation. It's fascinating, and I'm really proud of the projects that you have done so far. The Totem Lake project, I think I've driven by it every single day for the last couple of years. And I have a question about that project, and that question is, are the market rate and affordable housing units co-located?
They are not co-located, so they're in separate towers. There's a shared underground parking structure, but amenities and courtyard spaces are separate between the two.
The blue building is the?
Market rate.
Market rate.
Yeah, the gray and blue building, yeah, that's the market rate building.
Okay. Now, with regard to your project, I didn't catch who you were planning to tag as your community engagement partner?
We haven't selected them yet.
Okay. And what is the financing environment like right now?
So, for us, the majority of the funding will be financed through the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. Historically, we've, all of our deals, all, you know, I think 5,000 units in the state of Washington have been funded through that. We recently applied for funding last year on a project on the eastern side of the state and got funding there. So, for us, we, we know what it takes to get funding dollars. There's specific scoring criteria that we're very familiar with. There's cost efficiency points that, due to the nature of us being a builder and developer that we qualify for, so, again, nothing's guaranteed. It's been more competitive probably two or three years ago than it is now, just given the challenges of developing affordable housing with where interest rates are and where costs are. And so there's an application process in February that we'll be applying for, and, again, we got funded last year, feel pretty confident where this project would score, and so, yeah.
Great, thank you. And then finally, the developer equity and deferred fees. How much do you feel like that is going to, I assume those are impact fees that you're assuming?
Sorry, no. So, part of the financing structure includes a developer fee. You can defer, so a 10% fee is calculated based on the total cost of the project. You can defer that fee in order to pay for your construction.
Okay. So, going back to Councilmember Black's original question, part two, sort of what the expectation of the city, and I get that you, you're not 100% clear on it. You inserted the 7 million. Would there also be an expectation around things like impact fees?
We, on our Polaris project, we applied for the Affordable Housing exemption, and we assumed those exemptions on this one as well. So that's a good question, yeah. We assumed those, and I think they're still 80%, those 80% exemptions on the impact fees, we assumed that in our underwriting here.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, that's a good question, should have mentioned that.
Thank you, Joey, thank you for being here. One of the things when we first looked at this opportunity in Horton Village is that was inspired by Together Center.
Yeah.
It's something that we'd like to potentially duplicate, so delighted that you're one of the folks that Together Center is one of the partners that has applied here. My colleagues have covered a number of my questions. The couple of other things, though, one councilmember's opinion, you know, given your assumptions on city contribution, you've got the $7 million land discount, $2.75 million from Arch, and impact fee exemptions. One councilmember's opinion, I don't think we're going to be in a position to do all of those.
Sure.
You know, I think the, you know, if I had in my mind an idea of what I thought that the city would be able to do, it's more of something along the scale of the Arch contribution. You mentioned a number of things that you might do if those assumptions changed. One thing that you didn't mention is market rate housing. Is that something that provides more flexibility to do this if there's less of a city contribution?
Potentially. The beautiful thing about the Lytec program is that it provides equity into deals, and so it, it helps deals pencil, it provides an equity source. And so to run market rate housing here or a mix of market rate and affordable housing is something we haven't considered. I'd, I'd want to look at the numbers before answering that question, I'm more of a numbers-driven developer, but, yeah, I'd, I think it'd be something that we would consider. I know that, you know, I'm familiar with the MFT, MFTE program here, so would, would consider that if, if, again, that was, it depends on what the priorities are, so would definitely consider that.
And then second, among your assumptions, you've got new state standards for parking with Senate Bill 5184, which we have adopted. Was that part of your assumption, or does that change your calculus?
No, that was part of our assumption, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Falcon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, similar to the Deputy Mayor, I'm thankful that my colleagues went first because they asked a lot of my same questions, and, you know, heads up to ye and team, we probably will have similar questions about, you know, financing confidence and those types of things, so I'm sure I'll be prepared for that. But another question that I have as well is, I noticed that your proposal, and I realize there's flexibility in this, and this is kind of a rough estimate, but it was for all the housing to be at 60% AMI, and the Deputy Mayor talked about like perhaps a mix of market rate and workforce housing. My question is, have you thought about a mix of lower-income AMIs as well, where you have, you know, some higher AMIs, maybe some market rate, some 80, 100% AMI, but then some 50, 40% AMI? Because as you know, the vast majority, I mean, we need workforce housing, we need all types of housing at all affordability levels, and, and we all know this, right? But our greatest need in the city of Kirkland is really under the 50% AMI. And so I think it'd be great if there's, if we can make a dent in that with this project. And so, wondering your thoughts on that, is there flexibility in that? Can you imagine that there's a model where you could have more of a mix, like I said, where you go a little bit higher AMI on some in order to provide some lower AMI units as well?
Yeah, we've looked at the kind of income averaging model. We tend to stay away from it just because we've found that deals pencil the, the best at the 100% at 60% AMI. We definitely consider it, again, depends on priorities. By nature of lowering rents, you lower the amount of debt that you can, you know, underwrite, and so it just makes the deal harder to pencil from a feasibility perspective. And so that just needs more injection of capital into the deal with lower, lower AMIs. The, the income averaging is a potential avenue that we could look at, where we, you know, we average all the income so that the debt doesn't change, therefore the funding stack doesn't need to change. And so we had not contemplated that here. We've, again, just our standard is to go 100% at 60% AMI. Probably noticed in here that that definitely has changed, like we've, we've had to adapt, and so we will, so we can look into that.
Thank you, yeah, I was looking at some of the slides you presented with some other projects and that kind of, so, thank you. It's good to know that that's something that would be open for discussion.
My memory isn't perfect, so is there any way, I have not taken notes on any questions that have, okay, just making sure. I know I'm, you know, promising to look at some stuff, I want to make sure that I look into it.
All recorded, yeah.
Yeah, perfect, okay, thank you, just making sure this was recorded.
All right. Are you done?
Yes.
Councilmember Pascal?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for your proposal. Just a couple of questions, you know, this is a pretty unique situation, and, you know, you presented some examples of developments that you've done in Kirkland and other, other areas, but this is a situation where the city is, the landowner is asking for, you know, has asked for an RFP, will be going into a development agreement, and then will be a partner throughout the process. You know, I guess, have you had any similar situations with, like this, where the city's in kind of a unique role as kind of the developer in a way, and are seeking a development partner? And then, two, kind of what, what challenges or risks does that bring?
We have, we have developed with cities, and I'm thinking, we, we developed affordable housing deal in Auburn where we worked with the city to bring this, this park as part of the development, and so that's, that's one example off the top of my head that I know we've worked with cities on. We've worked with a wide range of partners on deals. You know, we are, you know, the Inland Group, we are, you know, efficiency-driven developer, builder, and we've worked with different partners who bring different things to the table. And so we've definitely partnered on a lot of our projects, and I would say that this would present another partnership opportunity, but would also present, you know, everyone has expertise in different areas, and so we've worked with different communities and different partners, and this would be no different where we're bringing our development and construction expertise, and we're working with a partner that's bringing knowledge of the community and, and truly what is needed in Kirkland. And so I think we're, you know, if you ask other cities that we've worked with and other partners that we've worked with, they would hopefully speak highly of our ability to, to bring our expertise and do what we do well, but also listen and be good partners. So, that's a good question.
Great, yeah, thanks for that. And a follow-up question, you know, one of the things that I've talked about in the past with this property is just the importance of that commercial land use, retail, that this provides for this neighborhood and for that type of land use to remain here, but to have the opportunity to build other uses in, you know, such as housing and affordable housing and nonprofit space. But it seems like some of the proposals, and maybe, I don't know if it was yours, but it does seem like the, the commercial and retail, the way that the proposals have talked about them, it, it's problematic from a financing perspective, or it, it provides, it presents some challenges, perhaps, is what I think I read into some of the, the information. So, so the question is, is what gives the best path forward for you to make it a very viable retail, commercial space on the ground floor, something that is substantial, that continues to provide those services for not just the residents of this property, but for all of the residents of the neighborhood? What is, what are those things that can, that really make it viable for you?
I would say the challenges that are associated with commercial on these projects aren't, they're not financial. We can underwrite commercial income into these loans that we take out, so it's not as if we only generate tax credits or tax-exempt bonds on the affordable units themselves. So we can underwrite the commercial revenue, so it's not a financial burden unless the commercial spaces sit empty. And so, we would, I'm, I'm glad this is a development agreement process because we would almost be leaning on the community here on, on what, what is the best use here? Because we want these commercial spaces to be full, and we want these commercial spaces to not only benefit our residents, but to benefit the surrounding community. And so, the challenges that come with it are, and I alluded to this earlier, we, we don't lease out commercial spaces, and so that's not our strength, and we could hire a broker, but, again, all that takes practice and time, and, and we're good affordable developers and builders, but, so the challenges are how to fill those up and, and making sure that they're the right kind of spaces. So I think the development agreement process would actually help us a lot, and the community engagement process will actually help us a lot on choosing the right tenants for those spaces, or at least marketing to the right tenants.
Yeah, so I guess I hear you saying that, you know, developers in a way, you know, whatever type of developer you, you are, you bring different skill sets to the type of development that you're, that you're building, and in this case, your, your background and your skill set is really around affordable housing, housing, and that you would be looking for assistance to make sure that you can attract the right tenants to that location and keep them. attract the right tenants to that location and keep the tenants over, tenants over time.
Yeah, exactly. And I, I think, you know, if we, if we know going into it that this is going to be a heavy commercial property, we'd probably engage a commercial broker to at least tag along with us on, you know, from the start through the development agreement process so he can, he or she can hear what needs to happen and then start to market this property for the right tenants, so.
Thank you.
Joey, I'm going to let you go.
Okay.
We, we have 20 minutes left and we haven't given Imagine Housing an opportunity to present.
You could also take written questions and get feedback back to the council leader as well.
Okay, I have a question for staff following up on Councilmember Pascal's question. I just have a question for staff. I'll follow up separately, although the public would probably like to hear the answer.
Well, we'll try to do final questions at the end. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you, all.
Thanks, Joey. Just give us a brief moment to transition and we'll invite our team from Imagine Housing.
No pressure, welcome. I'm sure some of the questions.
I'm so excited to answer them. I love talking about this. So hello, everyone. My name's E. I am the president of Imagine Housing. We are a nonprofit affordable housing developer, operator, service provider here on the east side, was, started in Bellevue and kind of grown over the last 37 years here. And with me I have Casey Hawn, our architect with Matoon, who helped us put together this proposal. So the first part of this proposal is really about design. We took a lot of cues from kind of where the city has started with the community outreach and some of the things that the community asked for around lower rise, commercial space. So we chose actually purposely not to maximize the space because that's what we saw on the community boards. So we went in on this with Habitat for Humanity, who's our other partner to provide some home ownership options. So you're looking at roughly 20 units of home ownership and 120 units of rental, which we felt was a little bit of the lower density and kind of like I said, what we saw on the community boards with the commercial space. So I'll turn it over to Casey here with some of the design aesthetics.
As E has mentioned already, our proposed concept really aligns with city's objectives and then the development framework and especially is informed by community feedback from the outreach we have done last year. To respond to one particular community, community concern about additional height, so our proposal intentionally does not max out the height for all the buildings and nor the, you know, the full capacity of the site. So we have two buildings here. So this building one has three stories of units, about one story, ground floor. So this one really below the allowable height, right? So it's three over one. So we felt like this is the right response, is kind of a low-rise kind of scale. So you can tell even from this section, so this part of site is a little bit lower, so this massing is really kind of stepping down, kind of follow the side slope. We do have building two, so that's the four-story units and over the, the ground floor, so the four over one. So in addition to that, we, the, you can tell from this massing diagram, so we push back the upper level massing and is along both streets, along this 68th and also this street. So the idea is by doing that, so you set it back from the, the ground floors, you can tell here, it's really create this kind of one-story scale at the street level. And you can especially kind of tell right here, so when you walk along that street, you really feel this is kind of one-story structure. So it felt like that scale is very consistent with the existing kind of retail buildings in this area. And then I'll just want the point out really quickly. So, you know, this diagram we're showing here really more like a number of stories and then the massing kind of setback. We will put, you know, the modulation in and out into that building, I promise, when we design them. And then for the, the concept kind of the site, we proposed three open spaces at the street level, is those kind of peach-colored oval shapes. So there's a central courtyard, there is that north plaza, very actually generous size, and then this entry court. We think that's actually important along the North 8th, 68th and really draw people in to that space. And then we understand the importance, have this pedestrian connection, so these space really help like where this dash line shows. One is to provide this future new connection to CKC Trail. And another thing is really provide that, the direct and safe pedestrian connection between the school, the CKC Trail and also the 68th Street. Another thing we are showing here in blue, so we heard the community feedback, you know, you guys had lots of questions about this. So we propose over eight, 18,800 square feet that either commercial, retail or community spaces, they're all in the blue here, at the street level. And I appreciate one question about this. So our idea is here, you can see all the different blues, right? So they kind of spread out and has a variety of sizes. And some of them kind of face to, certainly 68th is very important. So we max out all the blue and commercial space except there's a little entry for the residential and we really think that's important. But we think it's important wrap around those commercial space or community space and into the courtyard as well. That's very important as well. And then having different locations and different sizes and then really kind of build in this flexibility and then tailor different kind of those business. Another thing we did here, we proposed to set back retail entries at either this kind of intersection of the street corner or this corner is that, the building corner at, for that building two. And I think Allison asked us to show some look and feel, so since we haven't really do a lot of, you know, design for this, and so I brought several examples of our other built projects or some design work to really kind of talk through several key kind of design elements we think we would like to do for, for your site. So like this example of the open space at the street level, our design will be really focused on, very similar to what you see here, very focused on pedestrian oriented, really focus on accessibility for all, for everybody. And we think the landscaping and the art elements, they're very critical elements to really create this park-like setting, really attract folks and, you know, and to this space. And then we envision there are multiple seating areas in that site plan, if you remember all those bubbles. And those are really for kind of like retail spill-out outdoor spaces or for the general public use. I think that spill-out space is so critical for certain retail. And the pedestrian-friendly building fronts, that's another very important thing. So those will have a very high transparent windows and storefront, just like this rendering. And so in the way really help to activate the street, enhance the pedestrian experience and also really provide this very strong visual connection between inside of those spaces and the streetscape and also contribute to this very vibrant, engaging urban environment in this neighborhood. And our design will provide active urban retail edge for pedestrians. And like this example, this building, we would want to provide the 14-feet sidewalk and that would include 10-feet movement zone and the 4-feet, that's we call the storefront activity zone. So this zone is really very flexible, is either for, you can tell here like a flexible outdoor seating or maybe some vendor display or even the planting or some signage. And then this is another example about that setback, the retail entries at the corners we show you at the site plan. So really trying to create some active outdoor space by doing that. And then this particular example is this outdoor space, outdoor seating area actually for this restaurant. And also by doing this, we really anchor that street and really mark the entry of the development and also provide this welcoming transition space.
So some of the things that the proposal asks for were some of the community benefits, you know, for Imagine Housing, we are long-term owners, holders. I don't think we've ever sold a property in our history, so we would remain kind of as the owners of the property, really looking at all of our units that we do is affordable. We don't really do anything else and we're really focused on families, really trying to bring more two and three bedrooms into the community. And, you know, but we really saw that from like the, the community, the importance of that commercial space. While we normally don't do commercial space, we actually are commercial owners, we own commercial property, so we have some experience in this. Really want to make sure that we do have that street activation, understanding how important that street is. And really being part of the community, we spend a lot of time making sure that wherever we develop, wherever we are, that we are very involved in local community. I think this year we just confirmed our sponsorship for the Kirkland Turkey Trot. So wherever we go, we want to make sure that not only is Imagine Housing, but all of our residents feel like they, they belong in the community that they live.
So there's additional community benefits provided in our proposal. I think I kind of touched on several already. So there's that kind of sidewalk public improvements, the pedestrian safety improvement, you know, the public plaza, open space, and certainly alignment with city's sustainable strategic plan. And also for the public art. So this is something we really feel super important for this kind of project. And like you kind of see probably there's some hint from the examples and we really want in, incorporate public art into this project and through the partnership with local artists and the Kirkland Cultural Art Commission. And we think that is a great way to reflect the, you know, the identity and the history of the community, kind of bringing everybody together for this project.
So everyone's favorite part, funding. You know, we also assumed a city value of $7 million for the land, hearing loud and clear that we probably need to go back and rework some of those numbers, but this is pretty standard in terms of law of our funding stack, in terms of 4% low-income housing tax credit, the state housing trust fund, some money from Arch, the deferred developer fees. You'll see in there, this is not something we normally do, but the commercial debt for that commercial space, we would be willing to take kind of that risk on making sure that that is provided. A big part of this is also the Amazon Home Equity Fund. We have had a wonderful relationship with Amazon. They've actually funded some of our other developments and they're actually one of our bigger supporters. And making sure that we're tapping into the Home Equity Fund to provide some of the sources. And what's not on here is also some of the costs around the homeownership units. That is something that Habitat would be working through. There are kind of greater costs with home ownership due to warranty. So part of this is a blend of those two developments together and very high-level conceptual ideas where we think numbers would be based upon some of the other work that we have Timeline, so we're much further out. From a timeline perspective for us, part of this is a lot of community engagement. Like I said, I read the community boards and understanding of the need to bring the community along. So this is similarly structured to development that we are doing in the city of Kenmore. City of Kenmore purchased an acre of land, we're actually doing this with Habitat there where we're co-locating rentals and homeownership. And that community engagement process was just much longer. We held like fairs in city hall, we were there for some of their city events, we held listening sessions for a good two years before we came to a purchase and sales agreement with the city, just to kind of move the entire community along. We spent, I don't even know how much, we sent a mailer to every resident in Kenmore. We created FAQ pages just because we, like I said, wherever we develop, we want to make sure our residents feel welcomed and that they are part of the community. The other part of why there's such a long development timeline here is what we also see as some of the other things are happening kind of within the state of funding cycles and kind of between sound transit, between some of the other public funders kind of where they have signal priority of when we think this has the greatest chance of success of being able to slot it in. So kind of giving a long runway of making sure that we're working with the city, working with the community and working with funders to be successful. So yeah, thank you very much.
Councilmember Black.
Well, thank you. So you, I'm going to ask basically some of my same questions, although I do have one additional question. And you, you've answered some of them, so you don't, you don't need to address them again. So for example, I think you've talked about what the scope and nature of the subsidy that you at least included in your proposal. And you talked about long-term ownership and your experience with retail. And you also talked about ground floor and what the orientation might be of, of some of that. So setting all that aside, so really actually the, the one question I have is the same question regarding exposure to federal funding uncertainty. If you said it, I missed it, I apologize, but similar to the other proposal we heard from?
Yeah, so we don't assume any Section 8 vouchers in here. I mean, this just me being very transparent, even with the affordable housing tax credit reform, what we're watching is the low-income housing tax credit value on the market right now. And we're trying to make sure that, now, whatever the value that the market assigns to them, if they start dipping, that creates a gap within the funding stack. So we've been very cognizant of kind of talking with our tax credit syndicators and investors about what does this mean with this reform and what does this all look like? So it, I mean, I can't give you a solid answer of what tax credit pricing is going to look like next year, but it is something that we're tracking so that we can update all of our performance with it.
Okay. I do, well, thank you for that and I do appreciate, I, I should have acknowledged right before, I do appreciate the extent of community engagement that you've, you're planning for, really appreciate that. And I appreciate that there's, that homeownership is a part of the proposal as well. Remind me about whether, so you have, sorry, I'm trying to find the table in our materials. There's mixed market and affordable?
No, it is 100% affordable and then affordable homeownership.
Okay, and is the ownership and the rental, is that blended in throughout the entire project or?
No, so if you look at the design, the shorter stack building would be the ownership. Part of that's just from a construction liability, if you start blending them into one building, it opens up a lot.
That makes great sense. And actually, while we're on that subject, real quick, this was a question I was going to ask. Is there something about the low-income housing tax credit financing that results in the outcome that we see often, which is that market rate house, in a mixed project, market rate housing is in its own tower and affordable is in a different tower? Is that, is that what's driving that?
Yeah, so it's not just a tax credit, but it's a lot of the public funds, like your state housing trust fund dollars will only subsidize units up to a certain income level. So just to keep it cleaner, to have them co-mixed gets harder for like a public funder person.
So every time city councils like ours ask that question, we're going to, until something changes, we're going to get the same response?
Yeah, I mean, there's other ways to do it where you could potentially condo like the top three floors for market and the bottom three for affordable, but it gets much harder to kind of like go one floor this, one floor that, mixing it in a different way.
Okay, let me just make sure, yeah, thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you, Councilmember Falcone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate your questions, Councilmember Black, and thank you for being here and for your thoughtful presentation. I also really appreciate the mix of homeownership and partnership with Habitat for Humanity, affordable homeownership in addition to affordable rental units. I think, and I also really appreciate your focus on community input, both I think, and I also really appreciate your focus on community input, both in terms of the design that you presented tonight and in your timeline that you've presented as well. I just want to make sure, my first question is just ensuring I'm understanding the timeline correctly. So for the timeline, the, or the rationale behind it, the, the public engagement and making sure we have a heavy focus on public engagement really answers why the timeframe is longer in length than it would otherwise be. But as far as the start date of 2028 as opposed to sooner, that's really just an understanding of, you know, having your, your pulse on the funding climate currently and when you think that will be most successful. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes. So we would really be going into funding '28, '29, kind of those funding cycles. Part of this is also, you know, as part of our community engagement, is that we would also need to finalize on design. This is a very like conceptual look and different pieces can still move. What we want to bring to the community is kind of really where we feel 90% comfortable with, so that we can start working with the community to get feedback and thinking about what adjustments we can make. So it's going to take a little time for us to actually have that finalized design before we can take it kind of and talk with people about it.
Okay, so there would be some work between now and 2028?
Part of it's finalizing design, then once we actually have that, I would assume that would take us about six to 12 months to really finalize kind of the program, the scope. And then we would then go out with kind of the community and start like kind of a longer engagement process and talking with the neighborhood.
Great, thank you. So that timeline was my first question. Thank you. My second question is the same one I asked. The last presenter was really, is there flexibility? Do you see a feasible path forward to include, to include any lower income, lower than 60%, under 50% AMI, if we were to be flexible with the AMI for?
Yeah, I mean, I think I could see 50s. I think below 50s is where we start having conversations about some of the challenges that come with that. Especially kind of at that 30% AMI to that question around, there's no federal exposure, but once you start dipping lower and needing Section 8 vouchers, that federal exposure goes up and that creates more risk. So it's a question for the city of like, how much risk are we all willing to take on that?
Great, thank you.
Council, I'm going to, Deputy Mayor's next. I'm going to let us run over, which means we won't take our break at 7:00, but I want to give that us this time. Is that all right? Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. And E., Casey, thank you for how your proposal really took into account all the work we've done with the state. It really, really shows. My colleagues have covered a lot of ground. E., you, you mentioned that you may have to iterate on this, given different assumptions for how much public money could be in this. Can you talk a little bit at all at how that might change your proposal? Is it, is there an opportunity to incorporate market rate? Does it change building height? Is there anything like that you can share now?
Nothing off the top of my head, right? It's hard for us to go even lower, since we're not maximizing the site as it is. Part of this would be, you know, having that conversation with Amazon, having that conversation with Microsoft, having conversations with other funders, if that, if there is a gap where there are opportunities for us to fill that gap through our own philanthropy. So we would have to get creative in thinking about what that would look like. So I can't really give you like a solid answer of what that would look like, but I mean, part of that would also be looking at, I hate this term so much, but value engineering of looking at kind of buildings. You know, we tend to try to build to the quality of a lot of market-rate apartments, and that's something we pride ourselves in. But like one of the things we did was we eliminated decks at one of our latest developments to try to bring some of that cost down. So I mean, that's kind of where we would start looking at, where are the places that we can try to fill that gap?
Okay. And then the same question is with the Inland folks, what are your assumptions around parking? And does 5184 change?
So the state bill actually doesn't change how we look at parking. My dream world, I would love to build one-for-one, mostly because we know for our residents, they require vehicles. Public transportation does not serve our residents as well as they do, because their community too many different places of work. This is something that we see in our operations today, that our sites, especially the ones in Kirkland with lower parking ratios, really struggle with leasing. So if I could have my way in the world, I would love to go one-for-one, just because we recognize that our families need cars. But this is back to that finance question. Parking, underground parking is very expensive, so that would be one of the places where we would tweak and, you know, like I said, our goal is to try to get to one-to-one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Pascal? Good? Okay. We were easy on you guys.
I know. I got all excited, I want to talk about tax credits!
I know you want to talk more. And I do have to say, both of you, when the other presenting are back there going, yes? Yep. So thank you both for coming. I think we're going to have a couple of questions for staff, but we sincerely appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
So Councilmember Black, did you have a question you wanted to?
Yeah, real quick for, probably for Director Weinstein and City Manager. Joey mentioned from Inland, the partnership with the city's sort of knowledge and experience related to retail space. Do we, do we feel like we have our share of the knowledge and experience to help be partners in trying to shape that part of the concept to provide, to deliver to the community?
I think we would seek expertise as well. Obviously, brought a new economic development manager who has quite a bit, and we'd partner with our businesses in Kirkland, but I think we would also want to get some professional help.
I mean, we see a lot of, we've seen over the years, like Director Weinstein's seen a lot of projects permitted and approved and built, and we probably have a sense of what kind of retail, a commercial space we've, that has generated. So we, we have some share of?
I'm afraid Adam to?
It's kind of a leading question, I guess I'm asking Adam, say yes. But don't, you don't have to say yes, Adam, but I'm curious.
Councilmember Black, yeah, I mean, I think the way that we approach it primarily, other than the economic development, from the, other than from the economic development perspective, is making sure the design is really good. I think that we've seen retail spaces in the city struggle when they haven't been designed well with really, really good ceiling to floor heights, for instance, and lots of glazing and lots of transparency, transparency to the outside. So we focus a lot, I would say, on the design piece of it. Obviously, that's a little bit different than what you're asking about, which is, you know, working with the developer to find the right, you know, retail tenants that serve the community. And we would probably assist mostly with, you know, more community outreach or supplemented community outreach to what we did already. And then as, as the city manager mentioned, you know, getting expertise in that area as well.
That's helpful. Actually, I think you answered my question more to the point of what I was asking about the design. But with our economic development manager coming on board, it's, we may have a little bit of a?
Absolutely.
Expertise plus. So thank you, that's helpful.
Right. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I have a number of questions for staff, just to lay out what I will need as we move forward, not necessarily to answer at this moment. First, as I was kind of spitballing on how much I thought the city contribution could be given, a number of budget things that we've been talking about across the board, it would be helpful to understand and have some analysis on what staff thinks the city can contribute, given some of the assumptions around impact fees, land value, and, and other things to move this moving forward. Second piece is, the timeline here is longer than I had expected, and given that we are going to need to iterate with potential partners or make a decision to say, we sell this land back to the private market for private development. Given the timeline, I'm interested in the city's cost and our options for carrying this when we're talking about going into the 2030s with this, which is longer than expected. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I had the same question. And Councilmember Tim Chisen?
Thank you. To Deputy Mayor's point, the timeline and carrying costs are, are going to be enormous if we're carrying this for, for close to a decade into the future. I think we do need to nail down that number of what our acceptable contribution is, so that we can give these presenters a more dialed-in cost figure. Some of their, their presentations, our contribution is going to be pretty high, and the AMI of apartments is, is going to be fairly low. That AMI is King County AMI, it's not Kirkland AMI. And the Kirkland income, median income is higher than King County. And the median income in, in Houghton is higher than Kirkland. And that leads to this very high land value, which creates a lot of the barriers here. And so I think we should continue to pursue this, to provide the workforce housing that we want to, but I think we should simultaneously pursue the potential sale of this property to a developer that would come in and have their own vision for it and provide potentially affordable housing at the inclusionary requirements that are currently run with the land. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pascal?
Yeah, thank you. A couple of comments for, and questions for staff to kind of look into and bring back, kind of on the same lines of what I've heard from, from others so far. One of the things, you know, I think I've been very clear on one of my priorities is continuing to maintain commercial space, neighborhood commercial space for the area. And so one of the, one of the data points I'd like to just make sure we kind of clearly outline with any of the proposals is, what's the commercial square footage that we, that's offered there today with the buildings? And then how does that compare to what each of the proposals has, just so we have a good understanding basis to compare against? So I'd like to see that kind of just in simplistic terms. The second thing is just kind of building up on some of the prior comments on the level of carrying costs. It's the costs, yes, definitely I want to understand that from the city side, but it's the, it's the resources that we put towards this over multiple years. So that's staff time. That could be also, I don't know that we have all the in-house expertise to negotiate some of the deals. So that could be hiring consultants. So there's all these other costs that are beyond just the carrying costs, right? That need to be understood and we need to be transparent about. I just worry that this is a significant undertaking to manage on the city side. Staff time, and that's, it's one reason why I do believe, why local governments don't do these type of things. So I'd like to understand that. And then the third, I, I do want to see options for selling the property. I want to understand that more. Obviously, that's an option, but what would that look like? What would that entail? What would the timeline be? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
I would just, I was going to be quiet until we had the option thrown out with regard to potentially looking at options for sale. I'd be interested in also evaluating the options for keeping the property and projections for?
Just holding it?
Holding it, right.
All right, anyone else?
Can I just make sure I understand that? So for example, if we refinanced it and held it, what might it be become worth over time versus having a specific proposal? Is that what you're asking? Okay.
All right, City Manager, anything else you need from us?
Just want to double-check. Allison, was there anything else you wanted to? Well, thank you. This is a great start. We'll be coming back again to check in on this. Thank you so much for your feedback, and thank you to the proposers for their excellent ideas.
All right, we are going to move on to our Kirkland Safety Action Plan and Speed Limit Setting Policy Update. If you guys get your full half hour?
Thank you.
We will just run over. So thank you for waiting. City Manager?
Okay, thank you for giving us the time. So while we're doing this, I'll introduce our team. Our Public Works Deputy Director, Sarah Olson, is here. Transportation Engineering Supervisor, Jennifer Palmer, along with Nikki Davis, who's a transportation engineer with our consultant, DKS Associates, will be making the presentation. And as you mentioned, Madam Mayor, this will be about half an hour presentation. I appreciate Council giving us the extra time. And this is a update on the action plan. Looking for Council questions and feedback, but there's no decision today. Go ahead and turn over to Sarah to start.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council. City Manager already made all of the introductions of our panel, but this is your first touch on this topic, and I know there's a lot of information and data. And we, I just want to say from the outset, we pledge to come back more. So what, what we can't get to tonight, it's okay. Jennifer?
Wonderful. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council members. Tonight, we are here to talk about the Kirkland Safety Action Plan, to give you an idea of what we've been working on, to help answer questions and have discussion on these. Just to get us kicked off, since we've already done introductions, Victoria Kovacs, our transportation planner, and then Nikki Davis with us as well, who's working on the consultant side. This project that we're working on now is aligned, just to do some place setting with our goals and policies in the transportation strategic plan. So in the TSP that we adopted in 2024, we reaffirmed a previous goal to eliminate transportation-related fatal and serious injury crashes while reducing all crashes by 2035. And that's re, that's reaffirmed from the 2015 master plan. So it's a long time goal. This, this plan is meant to run in conjunction with the TSP. It's not meant to override any of the policies. So all the policies in the TSP still stand. The Safety Action Plan also aligns with a number of objectives and strategies that are shown in the Vision Zero Action Plan. Next slide, please. And so Nikki's going to take us through the presentation and talk about what a Safety Action Plan is and what it does.
Hello, Council. My name is Nikki Davis. Oh, excuse me. Hello. I'm Nikki Davis. I am with DKS, as Jennifer's mentioned. And I'm just going to go over some of the findings that we have found through this project and our analysis, and talk to you kind of just an overview of what a Safety Action Plan really has to offer to the city. So we'll start there. The Safety Action Plan and its framework and how it's going to work for the city in the long run is, we're going to really take a deep dive into looking into these risk, risk factors. You know, where are we seeing these collisions happening? What are the trends that we're seeing happening? What are some of those contributing circumstances that also come along with these collisions? As Jennifer has mentioned, you've already set that goal to committing to zero fatalities and serious injuries by 2035. This in itself is a great start, and so we're just going to keep moving towards that goal throughout this process. Once we've completed that view into these existing histories of collisions or these collision histories, we can really set forward with a set of, let's see, focused correction, corrective actions, right? Take a look at these strategies that will help us in the long run eliminate those serious collisions or fatal, fatal and serious collisions. Additionally, we have looked into updating and developing a new speed limit policy for the city of Kirkland. And I'll just do a little overview of that also through without the, throughout this presentation. So how do we get there? Well, you've done step one. You've done that leadership commitment by committing that zero fatalities in 2035. We've completed the citywide crash data analysis, which is our first part of development of the safety plan. We've taken a look at your existing speed limit policy, reviewed how it's currently structured, and looked how we could update it for the future. We've also engaged with your public. We've talked with your transportation commission. We've held meetings with your community members. We've had an online option where people could go and leave comments. It's, all of this builds together into that Safety Action Plan, again, leading us to that Vision Zero. I'll jump right into the citywide crash data analysis. So here's just a real, a high-level overview of what we've discovered. I think the one thing I'd really like to point out here on this particular slide is that decrease, right? You've, you've dropped 40% in total crashes. That in itself is a great movement towards where we're trying to go to. We're not fully there all the way yet, but at least we're moving in the right direction. This here is a kind of the, another overview, right? We have a map that's showing kind of those locations of where we're seeing the collisions happen. You can see here noted, we have the, the intersection collisions, our rear-end collisions, collisions involving pedestrians and bicyclists, as well as lane departures, really leading where we're seeing these, these, these collisions happen. And so we want to make sure that we're focusing there when we're looking to develop those safety countermeasures. The, the idea here is that these, this analysis is going to help inform those strategies. It's going to get us to this pinpointed countermeasures that are just designed for those types of collisions. Overall, we see 33% of crashes happening between the hours of 3:00 PM and 6:00 PM. Not surprising, this is when we're seeing higher, higher volumes of traffic on the roadway. And this isn't just something we're seeing in Kirkland, this is something we see across the board in Washington. seeing in Kirkland. This is something we see across the board in Washington. I wanted to give you a, a quick look at these crashes involving pedestrians and bicyclists. To note here, this is overall crashes, not fatal and serious, uh, crashes. However, again, when we did experience fatal and serious collisions that involve pedestrians and bicyclists, that's 46% of the representation of, of fatal and serious collisions. To be expected, we, they are vulnerable road users. They do not have protections like they would if they were in a vehicle. And so this is a, again, a number that's not just within Kirkland. This is what we're seeing within Washington State as far as higher numbers of fatal and serious collisions involving pedestrians and bicyclists. I, I want to come back to, this is all informing us, right? This is going to, again, get us to those strategies focused on the collisions that we're seeing. Those countermeasures that can go on the ground, those non-infrastructure countermeasures. How can we lead us into eliminating those serious and fatal collisions? A part of the analysis was what we call a near miss analysis. Um, if you're not familiar with the term, or some people may not be familiar with the term, this is those close calls, those moments when it's like, oh, my goodness, that was so close, right? And your heart kind of jumps a little. That's, we take a look at that. How we do this process is there's video cameras set up in some selected intersections and they run for about a 48-hour, um, period where we can really look at how is a pedestrian moving through that intersection? How is a, a motorist moving through or a bicyclist? What created that close call moment? And then how can we try to prevent that from happening so that we don't get the result of someone passing or it, uh, receiving a serious injury? One thing I like to really point out with these video collection, um, this, this, this video data collection process is we take very good care in ensuring privacy is held. Um, it's not intended to share anybody's information. We are literally there just to watch the movements of all of our transportation users. I'd really like this slide. And, um, if you've never seen what a near miss looks like once they've collected that data, this is really showing you what's happening on the road during that 48 hours. The first, the first image on the left, those little red dots represent a vehi- or, excuse me, a pedestrian or a bicyclist. And so this would be something that we would refer to as a vulnerable road user near miss. And then next we have the left-turning near miss events. Red light, running, speeding, which I like to kind of hold on that one a little bit. This wasn't where we had an actual speed data collection point. This is what they were seeing as they were watching the video. And then finally, the right merging near miss. Strategies and safety countermeasures. Each one of those moments is again going to feed us into those selected countermeasures. They're going to make sure that when we're offering, uh, strategies to put on the ground, they're pinpointing to those kinds of collisions that we are experiencing in Kirkland. Um, and then that leads us to hopefully reducing those collisions in the future. We looked at, we, we began this process of looking at 76 different collectors and arterials, right? So we looked at the crash data. We took a look at the 76 collectors and arterials. We did a crash rake calculation and then talked with staff members so that we can pinpoint the areas of need, the, the areas that we're really experiencing these collisions more over than other areas. And that got us down to about 10 segments. Same with the intersection analysis. Again, we used that near miss analysis. We looked at our crash, uh, histories and we also spoke with the city staff. The city staff input, I think, is just as important. There are times when a crash may have happened, but just didn't give us what we know is happening on the roadway. And staff will know that when they talk to community members, when they get those phone calls from those concerned citizens, they'll be able to give us that extra added layer of data. Of the 10 intersections selected, four were really looked at as far as crash data, and then the six went through that near miss analysis. Again, this is all feeding into those strategies. And I keep saying it over and over again, but this is the important part. Understanding what's happening on the roadways now, so we can try to prevent that from happening in the future. Leading to this, leading us to these recommended countermeasures. Um, on this slide, you'll see we've noted some leading crash types and leading contributing circumstances. This is, this is where it goes. We find that we've have quite a few left-turn collisions happening. We find that we have quite a few angle collisions happening and rear-end collisions happening. We want to make sure that those countermeasures that we offer in the end really try to address those, as well as those contributing circumstances, exceeding reasonable speed or did not grant right away. And they don't necessarily mean one for one. It, they can be a combo of those contributing circumstances. Someone can be speeding while not granting right away. And, and then ultimately leading to that toolbox of countermeasures. And in that toolbox, the city will be able to choose from the, the selected measures. There'll be a small narrative that goes along with that. We'll provide some crash reduction rates, which comes from the CMF clearinghouse. And if you're not familiar with that, this is a, an area where agencies can go to research studies that have been completed on before and afters on particular countermeasures that have been installed. We also provide an average cost to install. We try to keep that at a very high level because as we all know, construction costs have changed and they change often. So we have an idea. They can either be a low-cost, near-term installation. It could be midterm, kind of medium costs, or long-term with a high cost. And so we provide that as well. The idea is that the city can use this plan over time. It's not expected that everything can get implemented right away. We know that there's, requires funding, there is, requires staff time. Um, maybe there's a grant that comes up in the future. They can take this plan down and take a look at those countermeasures and see if there's something in there that they can use to apply for. Community engagement, I think this was my favorite part, um, being able to talk with the community members and really just engage on how they're feeling about safety currently in Kirkland. We started with tea, tea with transportation. This was an open house held here in, uh, the city hall. Um, we had a great turnout and it was a really good time where the project team could talk with community members. We could talk about some of the concerns, some of the thoughts that we were having to try to address those concerns. We talked about the speed limit policy update and our goal with that. Victoria presented the crash data dashboard, which I think was a, a highlight. If you haven't gone to look at it, I would suggest doing so. It offers a lot of information in there. Um, and then we also informed that you could go online. We had an, uh, comment page online under our project page. This allowed for people who maybe couldn't make it to the event. Sometimes there may be mobility challenges. There could be other engagements like, I, I don't know, my daughter's soccer game or so, you know, right? So they couldn't make it into that event. Having that online process or that online community survey allowed them to still participate in the project. We could really hear what they had to say. Received over 1,000 comments on that online, uh, comment period or that on- online comment page, which is amazing. It just goes to show that people are interested in seeing a safer transportation system in Kirkland. Some of the highlights or some of the, the key, uh, comments that came to the surface was the poor visibility for pedestrians at specific locations, especially for turning vehicles. That comes back to those left-turn collisions. Uh, the discomfort with high-speed limits in residential neighborhoods, that comes back to that exceeding reasonable speeds. The call for increased education, that's wonderful, right? That's a, that's a whole nother layer that we can get into and talk about in another time. What I really appreciated about the comments from our community members was how much they aligned with what we were seeing on the collision types, right? So that's again, leading us down that great direction to get those perfect countermeasures or those, those selected countermeasures that are designed for what we're seeing on the roadways. This, uh, screen capture at the top here is how the comments were split up. You were able to comment on speeding, a few other concerns, pedestrians, bicycle, and again, those close call events. Before I jump into the posted, uh, speed limit policy, we talked about crash data. We talked about those near miss events and we talked about community engagement. Each one of those components are going to help ensure that we have a robust, well-informed and supported document as you move forward with this. But then we can talk about speed policy too. So to start this process, and I'll kind of go a little bit quickly through this, this particular slide, uh, our team at DKS did what's called a literature review into different methods and approaches to develop or update speed limit policies. We looked at the legacy. We looked at the expert approach as well as the target speed approach. At completion of our literature review, it was, uh, end discussion with city staff. We decided to move forward with the expert-based approach, which really looks at some key contextual factors. It looks at how land use designations are currently happening. It looks what how roadway classifications are, and it looks at those contextual variables. Um, I want to note that this updated process or this updated development for the new policy really is focusing on arterials and collectors. The default speeds of 25 miles an hour on local roads will still stay intact. That's how we have it at this point. Um, it, it is in development. It hasn't been fully, um, adopted. Is that right? Yeah. Um, so, but we did focus on those arterials and collectors. This one kind of gives you an idea of the process that it, we go through. We collect the operating speed data, which we did so at the beginning of this project. We collected at 76 different locations, I believe. Um, we determine which particular speed limit setting group the roadway falls under. Is this an urban area, which might be Group A? Or is this more of a rural area, which might be Group B? We look at that roadway context, those sensitive areas, those contextual factors, signal density, access density, that bicycle level of traffic stress, pedestrian activity and so on. The idea here is that we're ensuring we're paying attention to all road users, not just the motorists. Event, and then we apply those decision rules. This provides us with a recommended speed limit, which we would take a look at the target speeds, ensure that we're following within those target speeds, and then city staff can come to the city council for approval. Next steps. Next steps here is we're going to finish up that development of the plan. We're going to provide that back to the city here, I think, at the end of next week. At that point, we can go over our, our, uh, final plan, make sure we're addressing any final edits and comments and be able to take that forward to the Transportation Commission and at the, towards the end of July. At that point, then the city staff will come back to council for approval. I ran through pretty quickly, but I know we've been running a little short on time. So if there's any questions or if there's further discussion you'd like to have, I'm, I'm very open to do so.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Council? Oh, Councilor Pascal, thank you guys. Can I go back?
All right. Um, hey, thanks Nikki and the transportation team for this. Um, yeah, it's kind of, it's interesting. I'm, I think many of you know, I'm, I'm out of town at a transportation engineering conference, uh, and, you know, talking about safety, Vision Zero, Safe Systems Approach. See some of Nikki's colleagues down here, California. Um, and, uh, you know, spoke and had a presentation on this subject, uh, speeds, speed limit setting policy yesterday. And it was, it's great to, well-received. Washington State's very fortunate that we have, we, we have regulations in the state that allow local jurisdictions to develop methodology, um, that fit their community, their values or policies. Um, I've learned through this conference that California is very stringent and speed limits are controlled by the state. Um, so very different. Um, but anyways, uh, I very much support the direction here. Um, the city has a really, um, uh, well-respected consultant leading this. Um, I know the state DOT and the council that I sit on, Active Transportation Safety Council, is really promoting and pushing agencies to really look at how they set speed limits, um, so that they're set consistently and that land use context is taken into account. So this is really important policy work that many other jurisdictions are doing. So I'm glad Kirkland is doing this. So I'm just, just kind of just supporting where we're going and the direction we're going. The one thing that I would like to raise, and I think, I can't remember who raised it last time, but I would like to make sure that the safety action plan does look at e-bikes. Um, we've been receiving a lot of complaints or concerns from people throughout the city, where I think our regulation, the technology is getting ahead of our regulations in some way. Um, where these e-bikes are operated by adolescents. We want to encourage them to continue to use e-bikes, but we want to, um, make sure and discourage unsafe behavior. So I hope that we, hope that that safety action plan does also look at e-bike usage and how we can help educate and, um, encourage safe usage across the city.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, well, thank you for this presentation and thank you for the memo. Um, it was really informative and, um, I, I thank you for the context that, as usual, we have other plans that this informs and that kind of overlap a little bit. And so, um, that's always helpful context to have because we have a lot of plans, which, which is good. We're very thoughtful. Um, I appreciated that you, you know, at least touched on, you know, engineering, education and enforcement. Um, uh, and I think, you know, we know that those are all really important and studies have shown that some of them are more effective in keeping folks safe than others, right? So I'm, uh, supportive of, um, the, the, what seems to be the more thoughtful approach to speed limit setting, uh, with considering all road users and all forms of transportation and land use and other things, um, into those calculations. So thank you for that. I also agree with, with that methodology, but also, um, understand that setting speed limits is not like the only way or the most effective way of keeping folks safe. It's one, it's one of the, the less effective ways, right? And as we know that the engineering, you know, is, is so important in, in having folks reduce their speed and, and keeping, uh, our most vulnerable users, um, of our roadways and transportation systems safe. Um, and so I do have, um, some questions related to that. But before I get to that, um, I appreciated the, I forget who mentioned it, the comments about, um, being able to have community member input on near miss, um, type of things. I know a community member reached out to me and connected them with, with, uh, you folks that has, uh, was sharing a self-report tool that's out there as well, that the community, uh, community members have, um, done that work, you know, um, to, to start up a, a near miss database, not just in Kirkland, but in other places in the region. And so, um, uh, so thank you for collaborating with them. And I think that that's, uh, would love more information on whether that tool is a good place to direct people to when they have near miss, uh, things to report, or if it's better, just to email a city council member or city staff or kind of what is that, what is that route for folks to, um, report that, that really important near miss data? Since we don't always have cameras set up to do said study, it's important to kind of keep our pulse as much as we can for folks to be able to report, um, their own experience in the community. So, um, so thank you for, for that and for, um, future guidance on how we can, uh, share that with the community. Uh, I appreciate that. Also, along with the, um, speed limit setting, would be curious to understand, um, the effectiveness of some of the, um, the somewhat newly allowed, um, safety cameras as well and, and that kind of automated enforcement and what those, we know a lot of our neighboring cities, or at least some of our neighboring cities that are pretty close by. I live up in the Finn Hill neighborhood and live pretty far north, really close to Kenmore. And, and so I know that, um, I hear a lot about the, the automated enforcement happening, um, in Kenmore. And we know that some other, uh, close by cities are, are also doing that in addition to, to school zones. Um, and I, I'm just curious to know, as we look at, um, you know, that toolbox, um, of countermeasures after we, um, conduct this study of what that would look like and what, um, with, uh, while we're looking at speed limits, we want people to, um, adhere to those speed limits. And so, you know, what does that enforcement look like? And is it, um, beneficial to have, um, does it, does it work better to have the, the automated enforcement, right? Um, and what are some of our other options with that? I don't want to just, I want to think outside the box a little bit on what that looks like. I know, um, I've heard of some cities in other parts of the country where the, uh, where traffic enforcement, for example, is within the Public Works Department, um, rather than the Police Department. Is that something? You, what would that look like if we were to have that, um, to keep folks, um, driving more slowly, right? To keep folks safe. Um, my questions related to the, um, countermeasures in particular. Well, I first want, I'm looking at the memo, um, on the, the bulletized list of the, the key trends. The first bullet point, I just want to highlight because I think it's really important. It's not the most positive bullet point, but I want to just read it because I think it's really important that, that, um, over the past 10 years, there have consistently been one to two fatal crashes per year. Crashers results, resulting in serious injuries have increased, while less severe crashes, you know, possible injury or no apparent injury have decreased. So yes, overall accidents have decreased. So yes, overall, accidents have decreased, but the part that we're most concerned about, fatalities is remaining about the same, that hasn't gotten better, but it hasn't gotten worse. But serious injuries have increased. And that's a pretty important note for us to consider, that we probably need to think a little bit more outside the box, and, and help prioritize some of that engineering that we know that studies have shown help keep folks safe, particularly with our most vulnerable road users, which takes me to the fourth bullet point, that while vulnerable road users, namely people walking, rolling, and bicycling, were involved in only 6%, I know you had a slide on this, 6% of all reported collisions, they were involved in 46% of fatal or serious injury collisions. That's huge. That tied with the first bullet point that I just read, tells a pretty important story of how we need to be prioritizing the work that we do moving forward in these countermeasures. Like Councilor Pascal said, and I've mentioned this numerous times, you know, at our financial, financial retreat, and, and many other times over the past several years, that we need to have more of a focus on not just e-bikes, but on PEVs in general, the, you know, personal electric vehicles. Because it's not just e-bikes, it's, you know, the one-wheels, and the scooters, and there's so many of them. I think the first step to that is as a city, and especially as a council, I don't want to speak for everybody on the city council, I can speak for myself. I need to better understand the technology and the policy that currently exists. My understanding, anecdotally, from people who have, you know, e-bikes, and know a lot of people with e-bikes, is that, you know, there's a certain speed at which it may be advertised that the e-bike can, can operate with, but that can be pretty easily modified. So it may be sold as an e-bike, but then it can be modified to be more like a motorcycle. And we all have seen this, right, where we're driving in a 35 mile per hour zone, and a kid that looks to be 10 or 12 years old is zipping past you way, way faster than 35 miles an hour, right? Lot of, you know, sometimes no helmet, I've seen that. And so I have the perspective of wanting to keep those children safe, and wanting to understand first, what's the technology? What are we looking at here? And what, what is the, the policy landscape locally and at the state level? And then, after we educate ourselves on that, then moving to policy, or what are the gaps in policy that we need to consider? And what are the, how do we need to educate the public? And some of the education can come before that. And I know, like, some other cities have done videos and other things. I know there's some of that that we're, that we're potentially working on as well. But I think it's really important to have a better understanding of that, because I know I certainly don't have a full grasp on both of those things, the policy and technology. And the second thing I want to mention as far as the countermeasures is, and I'm not finding it, but the, the bullet point around intersections, and how intersections are really high-frequency collision area, right? And I've heard in previous meetings, in previous discussions we've had, that roundabouts are a lot safer, and a lot more efficient than traffic signals. Which is great, because we have our first couple roundabouts in the city of Kirkland, but we also still have a lot of other types of intersections, and a lot of, a lot of intersections with, with traffic lights. And so I'd like to better understand kind of what are, how, how much safer, and how much more efficient are roundabouts compared to signalized intersections? And what is the cost, right? Because I think we need to make some policy decisions, or some prioritization decisions, moving forward. On, are we going to have a policy that when we, when we're, when we're making improvements at an intersection, that our default is to try to engineer a roundabout versus replacing a signal? Are, do we want to consider programs? Like, is it enough of a safety issue that we're going to prioritize, looking at the most dangerous intersections, and converting them, even when we're not already planned to do improvements there, and converting them to roundabouts? I feel like I need to better understand how much we should be prioritizing that. Like, like I said, how, how much safer are folks, and how much more efficient to moving traffic through? Because we hear from the community a lot, as we're discussing other, you know, issues in other meetings, about traffic, and impacts on traffic at certain intersections. And if we could be more efficient and safer, I want to understand the cost of, of doing that, and kind of. And that, to me, that's one of the potential countermeasures in the toolbox coming out of this study that I'd like to better understand, because that'll help inform policy decisions moving forward. And I think that's everything. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
In the light of time, I will send my comments via email.
Thank you. Councilor Black?
Same.
Thank you. I will also do the same, because I'm very cognizant that the staff has to break down this space for our next meeting. So sorry to rush you guys, but thank you so much, and you'll be back. And you've gotten good input already, so thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
That concludes our study session for this evening. We'll be back at 7:30 for a regular meeting.
All right, we are back in session following discussion on the responses to the Houghton Village requests for proposals and an update on the Kirkland Safety Action Plan and Speed Limit Setting Policy. For those who have just joined us, Councilwoman Pascal is on the big screen. He's attending tonight's meeting remotely. Unless there is an objection, I am moving Item 4A, our proclamation, to occur after Item 7A, which is our special presentation, since our presenter for the special presentation is going to be the recipient of our proclamation. So, any objections? Hearing no objections, we will start this meeting with items from the audience. This is a time in our meeting when we normally hear from the public. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. We will provide up to a total of forty-five minutes for items from the audience, with no more than six speakers on a subject regardless of their position on the subject. If you would like to address counsel for the items of the audience, please sign up using the online public comment instruction link or the posted QR code in chambers. For those participating by phone, please dial star nine to be recognized to speak. Items from the audience is an important part of our business meeting. We ask that everyone be treated with kindness and respect. We ask that you please do not clap or applaud or otherwise openly express your agreement or disagreement with the speaker. When that happens, even when being openly supportive of a speaker, it can be disruptive to the meeting and discourage others from sharing a different point of view. We discourage people from using obscenities and making personal attacks against others. And we ask that you direct your comments to council, not to staff or audience members. In addition, because they can be disruptive, signs and placards are not allowed in council chambers during our meetings regardless of content. As a reminder, state law does not allow items from the audience to be used for promoting, opposing, or discussing a candidate's campaign or ballot proposition. Kirkland prides itself on being a respectful, welcoming community. We want everyone to feel like they belong in council chambers expressing their viewpoints. City Clerk, who do we have signed up?
Our first three speakers are Susan Papalardo, Erin Burquois, Ally Blair, and Kenny Drabell, and Susan is virtual.
All right. Susan, are you there? Susan? Go ahead. But we can't hear you.
Okay, here I am. Excellent. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Curtis, Deputy Mayor Arnold, and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Susan Papalardo. I'm a thirty-two-year Kirkland resident and the co-founder and president of the nonprofit Splash Forward, whose mission is to support new public aquatic facilities and programs that expand access to aquatics, build essential life skills, foster inclusion, build community connection, and promote healthy lifestyles. I sent you an email earlier today and wanted to reiterate a few key points. As you know, Splash Forward has been working closely with the city to expand aquatic opportunities and meet our community's well-documented demand for affordable year-round swim lessons and aquatic programs for all ages, abilities, and income levels. As you give direction on the options for the winterization of Peter Kirk Pool, please consider these key points. The overall goal is to expand year-round programming opportunities, especially to meet the high demand for youth swim lessons. Whatever option is selected, it should fit within what the city can afford and the long-term planning for a future new year-round indoor community aquatic center. Option two is the only option that can be considered without additional funding sources from those the staff have identified. Option two is a compelling option for two reasons. First, it includes upgrading the waiting pool into a fully enclosed year-round activity pool. This investment would significantly expand access to swim lessons, not just for youth, but also for adults and individuals with special needs. It would also open up programming for family recreation and adult fitness. Splash Forward would love to partner with the city and Lake Washington School District to bring our every second grader Learns to Swim program to this pool during the school year. Second, option two, combined with the baseline investments, which include the bathhouse expansion for three all-gender family changing rooms, new lifeguard office, and entry reconfiguration, not only extend the life of Peter Kirk Pool, but create a better user experience and allow for expanded usage scenarios that will improve the overall cost recovery from the projected fifty percent. We also believe that future winterization of the existing bathhouse, which is not currently included, would allow extended seasonal usage of the lap pool, similar to how local community pools operate today. We believe that the Kirkland community will appreciate the continued summer outdoor lap pool experience that is a Kirkland gem. Option two and the baseline investments represent a smart phased investment in the future. It is aligned with what the city can afford, improves the overall user experience at Peter Kirk Pool, can be completed in a reasonable timeline, and supports a broader base of users, laying the foundation for improved cost recovery and future growth. Splash Forward is ready to continue supporting the city with programming and use analysis. We are committed to working with stakeholders and providers to understand the needs and opportunities for Kirkland. Thank you for your commitment to serving Kirkland's aquatic needs.
Thank you, Susan. Appreciate it. All right, Erin? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Erin Bourgeois. I am representing Widener Apartment Homes. And I'm here to speak on the Michaels CAR at Juanita Drive and Ninety-Eighth Avenue Northeast. Our home office is next door to the subject site, and I'm here to state our opposition to the zoning amendment in its current form. We are a multifamily housing provider. We have seventy-two thousand units across the U.S. and Canada. Needless to say, we're usually on the other side of this conversation. We fervently support increased housing supply of all types and price ranges, which is what we already provide. We have no objections to the uses or the unit mix proposed for this site, only the intensity. The zoning amendment allows for a seventy-five-foot-tall building, which is out of scale with the neighborhood. And we've prepared an exhibit to show exactly what the building would look like. And I can email this to all of you. It's thirty-five feet taller, or that allowable height is thirty-five feet taller than our building and every other building around it. And it's on a very constrained site. Comparable buildings in Juanita Village sit on lots that have twice the developable acreage. And they're also removed from arterial streets, which leads me to our next concern. This vehicular access for this lot is only seventy feet away from this overburdened intersection. I can only imagine the traffic chaos that's going to cause. It's also my understanding that the traffic study that was submitted with the application is from 2022, and we don't feel that's reflective of current conditions. Additionally, SB 5184, as I'm sure you're aware, prohibits the city from requiring parking for units of less than twelve hundred square feet. The subject site could essentially be unparked, and the assumption here, I'm sure, is that all residents of this development, or any redevelopment on this site, would only walk or use transit. But, and again, we support that in concept, but we know that won't be the reality. And it's obvious to us that the neighboring properties would bear an undue burden of parking and access for the subject site. We just want to maintain the functionality of our office. And so, we request that the maximum height allowed in the CAR, or the zoning amendment, be reduced. We understand the urgency in both housing supply and cost and state mandates. And we also understand that the existing building on the site needs some substantial improvements. But Kirkland will be stuck with the result of this action for decades. And if it's not well thought out, what you allow here will hamstring what could be a far better development in the future. I only ask that you please take your time and get this one right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ally and Kenny?
Good evening, City Council members and Mayor Curtis. My name is Ally Blair, and I am part of a three-person scholarship team for the Matthew Dahl Kirkland Youth Council Memorial Scholarship. I served with Kenny Blair and Lilith Winkler Shore. All three of us are former KYC members who served with our friend Matt Dahl in 2007 through 2012. Sorry, every year I think I'm gonna get through it without crying. Maybe next year. Okay. Matthew died February 2019. Matt was very proud of his service to his community and loved being a part of the youth council. In Matt's spirits, his parents, Bob and Linda, established this annual scholarship to benefit KYC high school senior. I'm here tonight to introduce our newest scholarship recipient, Jasmine Low Velasquez, to the council and to our community. Jasmine, would you mind standing so you could be recognized? Jasmine graduated from Juanita High School this year. She'll be attending the University of Washington. Jasmine is to be commended for her extensive service to Kirkland on the youth council beginning in 2022. In an essay regarding her KYC experience, Jasmine said, "I remember my KYC interview, and I remember when they asked me what I would contribute to the council. I said that I would be the voice of the outsider, as I had only been living in Washington State for a little over a year at the time. I felt like my unique thoughts and perspectives would be advantageous to this group. Being on KYC has given me more confidence in myself and better leadership skills." Jasmine is the sixth recipient of this yearly scholarship. With our first scholarship being awarded in 2019, Kirkland Youth Council continues to provide an important formative opportunity for local youth. We want to recognize Reggie Schubiger for the wonderful guidance she continues to provide as program coordinator for the Kirkland Youth Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to make this announcement.
Thank you, Ally. And congratulations, Jasmine. And Kenny, did you want to talk, or?
Oh, no.
Okay. All right. You're on my list, so just double checking. Sure. Come on up, Jasmine. Some people can do it two hands. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. All right, City Clerk, anyone else?
There are no more speakers signed up.
All right, we are now closing items for the audience. Am I lower now? We switched chairs. We now close items for the audience, and we are going to now move on to special presentations on the city's supported employee experience. City Manager.
Okay, so thank you, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. We're very excited today to have this presentation. Our very first employee in our supported employment program, our service desk analyst, Anthony Segal, is here. He's going to make a presentation on his experience. So Anthony, please come up. He's also going to share a little bit about himself, as well as his experience, and then he'll be joining us for the proclamation afterwards.
Welcome, Anthony.
Welcome, Anthony. He's also joined by some family and friends.
Welcome, Anthony's family.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, and City Manager. My name is Anthony Segal. Today, I will share my story and how I became a City of Kirkland employee. I have nine slides, and one of them is pictures. After graduating from Remen High School, I pursued an associate degree program at Bellevue College. The program is called Occupational Life Skills or OLS, and it's for young adults with disabilities like me. I always enjoyed learning about technology. And my college counselor, Jessica Salick, reached out to Smitha Kershenan, the IT Director of the City of Kirkland, to explore internship opportunities for me. I interviewed for the internship, and I did very well. I accepted a six-month internship in IT. And then I graduated in June 2024. When I completed my internship, the IT Department threw a party for me, and there was cheese pizza, which I love. In October, the IT Director hired me back as a 0.75 service test analyst. My position expires at the end of this year. As a service test analyst, my job duties include: imaging new laptops. I image more computers than anyone else in my department; deliver laptops, monitors, docking stations, et cetera, to users; ensure equipment is connected and working well; clean conference rooms during downtime; check if technology is working well; surplus old equipment like laptops, monitors, et cetera; test city phones, surge protectors, and docks to make sure they work; assist with group computer deployments; perform tasks in Microsoft Exchange, such as adding users to distribution lists; and also support equipment moves for the fire department to new locations. Some of the job training I received, including technical training, where I received one-on-one training from IT staff. I also trained on my own using documentation in Udemy. My team helped me create checklists to stay on tasks. I also got administrative training to submit time sheets and to use MS Outlook and Teams for communication and scheduling meetings. I use Microsoft Planner to track computer deployments, and I attend department staff meetings and hear about what other teams are doing. I also developed soft skills, like my team, Smitha Chenchuk, encouraged me to ask questions and ask for help when I'm stuck on Teams. I provide updates at daily stand-up meetings, and I also took the colors training, and I found out during the training that I am a red and brown. I have a support system that helps me succeed. Here are my strengths. I consistently follow instructions with attention to detail. I am enthusiastic about new tasks. I especially excited when the 2025 machine arrived. I always am polite and courteous. I regularly hold the door open for others. I independently solve issues in the back IT room, reach out to coworkers via Teams when needed. And I'm also dependable. I have a good work ethic. I am here every day unless I get sick. I have a support system that helps me succeed. They share helpful checklists to make it easier for me to stay on track. They offer hands-on training to help me feel confident in my role. They create a welcoming environment where asking questions is always encouraged. The team is always friendly and approachable and willing to help. I worked with them to reorganize the IT workroom to boost my focus and team's efficiency. They even added classical music system in the IT workroom to make the space enjoyable and calming. Then my job coaches, it was first Jessica Salick from Bellevue College came to City Hall weekly to check in with me and Smitha. And then when I became a 0.75 service test analyst, Marcy continued to help me. The HR department also supported me by providing accommodations. When I started at the city, Smitha allowed me to follow a fixed predictable schedule and to arrive early and take the bus. HR also told me I could take frequent breaks, so I walked from City Hall during the breaks. On May 30, 2024, I began walking so I walked since City Hall during the breaks. On May 30th, 2024, I began walking in the building during my downtime. I made this a very fun project. I loved classical music and Formula One, so I designed a route using these themes around the building to make the walks interesting. There's my support system here. Yes, okay.
Okay, this is awesome.
Yes, here is my walking route. Take a moment and absorb this. Yep, this is where I go around the building every day during downtime. Here is the, and I walk 10,000 to 20,000 steps per day because of this. I count the total number of laps in and out of work since June 24th, 2024. The lap count in October 2024 was when I got employed with 0.75 FTE was at, this is a big number. I count the total number of things I do. It's at 114,000. The current lap count is at 549,150 as of today. So here is what next. So what's next? I hope to continue my employment in IT at the City of Kirkland, expand my technical tasks to help the service desk team, lead by example to promote supported employment at the city, and be an advocate for people with disabilities. Here are some pictures of me having fun at IT celebrations, and I won musical chairs and The Price is Right, and I got a prize for that. This concludes my presentation. I would like to thank Smitha, Matt, and Marcy for helping me with my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anthony, that was fabulous, and we are so happy you are part of our community, and you are a wonderful ambassador for this program. So thank you so much for all that you do for the City of Kirkland.
Thank you for this opportunity.
I don't think we have any questions. All right, so after that terrific presentation, we're now going to take up our proclamations, which is item 4A, which is Disability Pride Month Proclamation. City manager, Council Member Falcone will be reading the proclamation.
Hey, thank you, Madam Mayor. So we'll be proclaiming July 2025 as Disability Pride Month in the City of Kirkland. I would note for members of the public, there are resources and connections in the memo, which will also be talked about in the proclamation. But also receiving this proclamation will be Anthony Segal, our service desk analyst. So thank you so much, Anthony, for coming to take this proclamation as well.
Well, first, I just want to say, Anthony, thank you so much.
You'll be joined by the family, friends, and coaches, so welcome.
Wonderful. Please join us. Smitha, can you join us up here? Well done, Anthony. That was a very inspirational presentation that you gave, and I hope that we grow this program and have even more great employees in our City of Kirkland. Okay, I'll be reading proclaiming, a proclamation proclaiming July 2025 as Disability Pride Month in Kirkland, Washington. Whereas Disability Pride Month is celebrated every July, marking the anniversary of the Americans with Disability Act, ADA, signed into law in 1990, which was landmark legislation that broke down barriers of inclusion for people with disabilities and protects them from discrimination. And whereas Disability Pride Month is an opportunity to honor the history, achievements, experiences, and struggles of everyone in the disability community. Examples of highly successful people with disabilities are Stephen Hawking, Frida Kahlo, President Franklin D. Roosevelt, Stevie Wonder, Helen Keller, Ralph Braun, and John Hockenberry, among many others. And whereas, during this month, we also recognize and honor the invaluable role of caregivers, family members, friends, professionals, and advocates, whose love, patience, and dedication provide essential support and empowerment to individuals with disabilities, enabling them to thrive and participate fully in their communities. And whereas, while society often thinks of people with disabilities as a single population, they are a diverse group of people with a wide range of needs. And whereas researching, learning, and talking with your community about disability is an important and ongoing conversation that will help foster inclusion for the next generation. And whereas, there are several ways for our community to celebrate Disability Pride Month, including amplifying the voices and experiences of people with disabilities, uplifting them to share their story, or attending a Disability Pride event. And whereas, local events and educational resources here in our community that help celebrate Disability Pride Month include book recommendations from the King County Library System featured at kcls.org, and Seattle Theater Group's educational materials, including books, films, organizations, and support groups for people with disabilities, highlighted at stgpresence.org. And whereas, the city is committed to making Kirkland a safe, inclusive, and welcoming place where people of all abilities belong. Now, therefore, Mayor Kelly Curtis, on behalf of the City Council, proclaims July 2025 as Disability Pride Month in Kirkland, and encourages all community members to promote acceptance and appreciation of disabled people as family members, friends, classmates, coworkers, and neighbors, making valuable contributions to our community. Thank you.
All right, we are now moving on to the consent calendar. Before I have, we have a motion. I'd like to ask Deputy Mayor to present the audit of accounts and to highlight the proclamation we have on consent.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have payroll in the amount of $6,274,420.24, and bills in the amount of $6,78,956.55. Tonight, the mayor, on behalf of the City Council, will be issuing one additional proclamation. July is proclaimed as Parks and Recreation Month. This year's theme for Parks and Recreation Month is Build Together, Play Together, which celebrates the many ways parks and recreation professionals help create thriving communities by providing welcoming and inclusive programs, essential services for all ages and abilities, and safe, accessible, beautiful park spaces to build meaningful connections. Community members are encouraged to visit a park or attend a community event in Kirkland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move for a...
All right, I think I heard Councilmember Black first, and then I'll second Councilmember Falcone. Are there any questions, comments, or corrections to the consent calendar? I should ask the motion to approve the consent calendar. There is an ordinance. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Falcone.
Yes.
Councilmember Pascal.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Yes.
Mayor Curtis.
Yes, the consent calendar is approved 7-0. All right, we are flying through the agenda. Okay, we are on to business. Before nine o'clock. Okay, we are, hey, let's move critical ordinance to the end. All right, we are now moving on to regular business item. Our first item is a briefing on the 2025 Critical Area Ordinance Update. City manager.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we appreciate this going first. As you recall, this was an item that we had to move from the last council meeting, so we appreciate the opportunity to present a briefing on this ordinance, which has to be adopted by the end of the year. Here to give you that presentation is our environmental program coordinator, Anna Heckman, and our senior planner, Jen Andrer. We also have Adam Weinstein and Allison Zlik available if you have questions. So that'll turn it over to Anna.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Or Jeff?
Counsel, yeah. That's, I don't have to introduce myself now. But for those of you that I haven't had conversations with yet, my background is in ecology and urban forestry, and Jen here has almost a decade of experience with reviewing plans for the city, critical area plans especially. So we are partnered on this project. So, um, to get moving, so we don't get kicked to the end next time, this is just an informational update. We're not bringing any proposed changes for you at this time. Thank you. And, but we want you to be informed of what we're going to be bringing to Planning Commission. We have about 14 slides to cover in much less than 14 minutes, and this will consist of a five-credit class, so we hope there's a lot of questions. So, she's going to be my clicker for me. What do we have to do? State law requires that we have one year after our comprehensive plan is accepted to complete our critical area ordinance update. So December of this year, we need to do this. More importantly, though, we need to do critical area updates because it's important to the environment, to our community, and to human health and safety. Protection of our critical areas requires both regulatory and non-regulatory requirements, and these work together to create what we need to meet as a no-net loss. And as we go through the next slides, the things I want you to be thinking of is no-net loss. We want to focus on the function of these critical areas, and we want to be discussing quality over quantity. And those are important aspects that have come up with our state review. So the state has five different critical areas identified. First, one of our biggest ones is wetlands, as you can imagine. If you think of these, they are basically just, they're like sponges, saturated surface and groundwater areas. These clean water forests, they reduce flooding further down in watersheds, and it protects human health as well as property. We have a lot of plants and animals, not just in the urban environment, but outside of the urban environment, that depend on these wetlands for their survival. Wetlands are, they're regulated by Department of Ecology, EPA, and even the Army Corps of Engineers in some cases. It's important to know that wetlands are delineated by trained professionals, and they're classified based on their size, their quality, the function, and their sensitivity, and their rarity. And so if you want to think of a really high-quality wetland, we can think of like bogs and swamps, and even some of our marshes. They don't include human-made water areas. So if we think of canals or rain gardens, irrigation ponds, drainage ditches, those are not regulated under this requirement. Our next one, oop, is Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Areas, another big one in Kirkland. This includes, in our code, we discuss them as streams and stream buffers. These are waters of the states, which include all surface and groundwater. It includes the habitat that those waters provide for our fisheries, endangered and threatened species that we are required to manage, and the surrounding habitat of those areas, which include managing for migratory birds and other priority species. You know, we have bats. We've defined eagles in the past as a priority species for our area. These are regulated by Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, as well as Department of Natural Resources. And when we think about these areas, we want to be thinking about clean water, and it's important, again, environment, our economy. Salmon is a billion-dollar industry for our state and human health. Two other short ones, we have frequently flooded areas. Most of those areas in Kirkland are not on private property, but this is, think of hundred-year flood plains. And these are regulated by FEMA, as well as the National Flood Insurance Program. And then we have critical aquifer recharge areas. And in this, you want to be thinking about clean water, and this is regulated by the Department of Health. And so if we think of active wells and areas where groundwater would recharge into public drinking water supplies. And then lastly, we have geologic hazard areas. And similar to flood plains, we, these are regulated for human safety. We have steep slopes in Kirkland that are often prone to landslides. We have high erosion slopes. Think about like sandy bluffs out on the coast. And then we have liquefaction areas, which are areas that you might not be able to see, but areas that will turn into basically quicksand during an earthquake. And again, these take professionals to identify. And all these areas in the geologic hazard area is, they require special engineering stabilization to protect not only homes that are developing, but neighboring properties. And they're regulated by Department of Natural Resources. So what are we required to do? Number one with the Growth Management Act is we need to be identifying best available science. We had best available science professionally done for us back in 2017 for both codes, and so our update is fairly small with regards to new science. But the state does a great job of providing guidance on what can be considered best available science and what is not considered best available science. You have in your packet what we had updated through April, which consists of some of our city monitoring and survey data, the research synthesis, syntheses provided by the state, which were very helpful. And we have added some peer-reviewed research, as well as any traditional ecological knowledge or other expert opinions will be provided. Sometimes, science is difficult to implement, and so state guidance is at the state level. And so our job, if we are, have a conflict between our management requirements and best available science, is to identify what potential risks to the functions and values of those critical areas would be if we don't follow that best available science. And we need to find reasonable alternatives and solutions to meet the goals that are set aside. And it's important to know that protecting property on its own without doing enhancements, especially in an urban environment, when you have secondary impacts, such as heat island effects, invasive species, even our regulations that didn't start until 1990, 91. There were a lot of impacts prior to that, that it's important to be putting in for that quality over quantity. Two other requirements that we have to do, we have to take a regional perspective. One would be taking into account recommendations in the RIAA management. I know some of you are well-adverse at that. And then also talking with our neighbors. And so we have been working with neighboring communities. We're doing pretty good. Many of the communities have had also updates, you know, they're working on it about the same level we are. And in that, reaching out to other cities, like I have a map here from King County, and it shows, for example, Redmond, you know, the pink dot there is some of their critical aquifer recharge area. We don't have that in our city. We have a lot of steep slopes, the striped pink. If you look down towards Bellevue, they don't have quite as much on the north end. So we are individual, and that is, the second part of that GMA is, we also have to account for our own inherent economic, ecological, social, and cultural values. And part of that, as you guys are probably well aware of, comes from our 2044 comprehensive plan, which we have 10 goals and 35 policies in that plan that prioritize conservation, protection, and enhancement of critical area components within our city. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Jen, who will talk to you about our current code.
Thank you, Anna.
Okay, so we've talked about what we have to update and why. I'll run us through kind of a standard permit review process, and then how that opens up opportunity for code updates. And then we'll wrap it up, just a quick look at our outreach and our project schedule. So taking a look at chapter 85, essentially, if you're proposing to do a project in a geo-hazard area, you're required to submit a geotech report with your application materials, and the code requires that to be peer-reviewed by a city consultant at the applicant's expense. That all runs concurrently with a development permit, so it's going right alongside your building permit or whatever comes in. When the project is completed, you might have a series of recording documents. So this could like, look like a dedication. In this case, it could be an easement, a protective easement over the whole area, maybe just partial. And then we also have the notice of geologic hazard. That's recorded on the property, and it's intended to give kind of a heads-up for potential home buyers that there may be a geo-hazard on that property. Moving over to 90, which, if anyone has looked at it, it's much longer.
Moving over to 90, which, if anyone has looked at it, it's much longer and much more complicated. But the typical review has three touchpoints. So, we have work that happens kind of before you come in for that development permit, during, and then after. And to not repeat myself three times, those each have a peer review, just like the geotech. So, it starts off, if you're doing a project, and it's in or near a critical area for 90, you come in for a determination. That essentially establishes, or it confirms that a critical area is located on the property or near it. It delineates the boundary, and then, it will also establish a buffer. And that is important for determining what you can build and where. So, if you move forward with that, you come in for your development permits, you include a critical area report, and that's much more focused on your project. So, we're going to look at things like, what's the existing vegetation? Are you requesting any modifications? General compliance with 90. And then, depending on the project, you may have things afterwards. You might have monitoring and maintenance. So, for example, if you were required to install supplemental vegetative buffer standards, then anywhere between three to 10 years, you're submitting monitoring reports every year, sometimes multiple. And that basically is meant to track that vegetation and make sure that it's healthy and it's thriving, and that you're, you're on track to meet our standards. And this is very sensitive. Okay. So, those are kind of the standard permit review. The chapters are very nuanced, especially 90, so we just wanted to touch on, there's several sections that give some development flexibility for when projects come in. So, that can look like buffer averaging and reasonable use, like we have up here. We also have dimensional design standards that you can vary, so setbacks, and then also parking pads, and those are for residential uses. We also have a series of minor expansion allotment for if you have a legal non-conforming Okay. So, with all that, we kind of have two buckets for updating, right? So, we have the state requirements and best available science. We've done a gap analysis for both of the chapters, and like Anna said, the code is in good shape. We also had those BAS reviews done in 2016 and 2017 with our consultant, and so, that's looking good, too. And we're not anticipating too many required updates, but we just need to meet whatever science has happened in the past five years or so. Then, we also have a great opportunity for general updates and clarity. So, we want to make sure it's consistent across the other chapters, and then also simplifying the permit process where we can. Specifically for this, we're, we're doing like a data audit of the permits that we have, because we want to look more into the peer review and see really what are we getting from that. Are we getting much more, like, I had a note on here, I should probably flip through so I remember what it's called. One second. That's right. Are we getting completeness comments, right? You're just, you missed one item, you just have to fill it in? Or is it really more of a correction, and that could change the design of your project? So, we want to take a look at that for both chapters. In our experience, 85 tends to be more of just those completeness things, it's pretty simple. We get a good number of comments for 90, so there should be some value there, but looking at this research is what's going to help us figure that out. 85 being a little bit more simple, we think that there might be some room for establishment of thresholds, so if the scope of your work is small enough, maybe you don't need that peer review. But this is the process that we're going through to kind of identify if that's reasonable. Okay. Wrapping up. So, public outreach, on the left, you can see stakeholders that we've identified. We've reached out to a number of those, and on the right-hand side, methods of that outreach. We just quickly wanted to highlight that we've established two new webpages on the website. One will be a permanent feature, and so, it's going to be for educational resources and permitting. And then, we have a second one that is focused just on this ordinance update. And since the code is in pretty good shape, we're able to do more of a focused outreach when the time comes, depending on any updates and who it impacts. Final slide, our meeting schedule. So, as Anna said, we have a deadline from the state for the 31st, so it's pretty tight. Pretty sure we can make it. We're in line with other jurisdictions, so that also feels good. But we do have some buffer built in here. We're not anticipating big updates, but if we need to take a little bit more time, we do have availability to add more meetings. Okay. With that, we'll hand it back to you for discussion and questions.
Thank you, Jen. Councilwoman Swie.
Thank you, ladies. Great presentation. Always love the pictures. Was that a buffer repair going in there, vegetation?
Yeah. Yep.
Obviously, very young. How does the whole process fit in terms of the Shoreline Management Act?
Any updates that we make that implicate changes that are required in 83, we will do for clarification purposes. Our shoreline management update will be required in 2009, and so, we are going to hold off on any, anything that isn't in direct conflict and update all of that. Next.
Councilwoman Buck.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate this presentation, and I appreciate the attention, especially, I guess, in 90 with respect to the, the wetland critical areas, the attention to streamlining and clarity. And I think, you know, the, these rules are incredibly important and developed over a period of time, but it's also really important that we're looking for ways to make sure that individual homeowners and, and developers, it's, you know, clear what our rules are, and that they can go through the process. I was going to ask a question, just how many permits that come through, Jen, I guess maybe this is a question for you, how many permits that come through your department implicate? Is it, is it 85?
Yeah.
85 and 90?
Anna might have a better hold on 90, but for 85, I think we ran a report, and we have 200 permits since 2018, and did a breakdown by year, and we're looking at 20 to 30 permits.
Okay.
On a yearly basis? I don't have a number for a yearly basis.
Is there a sense among the planning department, when an application comes in, one of those 200-plus applications, when they come in, how development times differ between a project that does not implicate 85 and 90, and a project that does implicate 85 and 90? Or are folks pretty good at navigating 85 and 90 regardless?
I don't know, but I, that is a question I would like to answer.
I would say just from, not data-backed, right?
Right. Sort of anecdotal, yeah.
Been this for several years. 85 tends to be a little bit more simple, mostly because there's that one-touch point of peer review, and it runs right alongside. Now, of course, you might have an outlier that could have an issue, but because it's more safety-based versus enhancement, it kind of comes down to, is it engineered correctly? So, 85's a little bit more simple. 90 can vary a lot more. As I said, we get a lot more comments of it, there's more steps along the way, and there's a lot more options on the platter for what people can choose to do, and are they doing it in a compliant manner with 90? We don't have the level of detail of, on average, it's this amount of weeks, and maybe that's kind of the detail that would be helpful when we come back.
No, I appreciate that. I appreciate having the understanding, and they're critical areas for a reason, because they're critical. But it's also good to have an understanding of what impact it has on, on the permitting process. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you, Jen and Anna, for being here and your patience on waiting two weeks, it was worth the wait. For, I appreciate your comments, Jen, on peer review, that that's something that's going to be looked at, because what I recall, when we first adopted peer review, and this might have gone back to the time where Councilmember Pascal and I were on the Planning Commission, it was fairly unique to Kirkland. Are you also looking at what, how other cities deal with the geotech and critical areas determination as you evaluate our, our process and potentially streamlining?
Yeah, yeah. So, a couple of different things. We have established a really good relationship and have what's going to be kind of a reoccurring meeting with some of our neighbors, as we're all going through this process. So, having actual conversations with other staff. We've also pulled their codes to compare. I can speak, at least for 85, I'm working more closely with DNR, and the contact there has highlighted parts of our code that are more unique compared to others, that are really great and protective. So, I posed the question, for example, the geonotice, right, a recording document. It seemed a little bit unique. She said, "That's actually wonderful." And they, and then provided support for reasons why. I was like, "Okay," because that was something to look into again with the simplification of things. So, yeah, it's getting a good read on it, and so, that's what feels great about us being able to say, we're getting good feedback about where we're starting.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Councilwoman Falcon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you, Anna and Jen, for your presentation. This is really helpful. The memo was, was informative as well, but the, as usual, the presentation helped shed a little bit more light on it as well, hearing from you, so thank you. I really appreciate you mentioning wanting to, as Councilwoman Black mentioned, like streamlining some of this and making it more easily to, easy to understand for not just the developer community, but for our residents, for individual homeowners who may want to undergo some, some construction on their property. So, thank you for that. My question is, is in line with that, and then, I've heard from maybe a handful of, of residents and homeowners over the past year or so-ish, I guess, around questions on critical areas and what they can and can't do with their property. One homeowner wanted to add a deck, and was advised that they needed to have a more expensive, anyway, more expensive type of way to attach it underneath to their home, rather than having posts because of a critical area. But ones that I'm, I think, more sensitive to are folks that want to, want to build ADUs in their, on their property, and the perception is that they can't because of, because of what we're talking about here tonight and some of these restrictions. And I appreciated your slide on development flexibility for, for KZC 90, and I just have questions around, a lot of that seems, especially like the buffer averaging, to me, in layman's terms, seems more like something that like a developer who is perhaps building multiple houses on a site, or has a larger site, is able to do some of that buffer averaging. But for like a typical homeowner who maybe wants to put an ADU in their side yard, or their backyard, or somewhere, can you talk about what kind of flexibility there is there, and what we're allowed, what we currently allow, and under state law, what we could potentially allow additional flexibility? I mean, I think about the intent here, right, really with a lens of sustainability, and that's really important, and we also understand that having more housing and more affordable housing, especially in our more urban area, is really important for sustainability goals as well. And obviously, this is why we have flexibility in things such as fee-in lieu for our tree code, for example, and we have options like that so that we can still achieve our higher-level goals, and just have some of that nuanced understanding, and, and being kind of reasonable with folks who, who want to help with the needs that we have. So, wondering if you can speak to the ability for folks to, is, are there options, are there flexibility, is there flexibility and options for homeowners like, like I mentioned, who want to build housing in their, like missing middle housing in their backyard?
I might be able to touch on this. Can we go back to the slide that shows multiple?
Anna, can you make sure you speak into the mic, too?
I can do my best.
Thank you.
Keep going. Yeah, so, yeah, so, speaking on a general level, and not knowing an individual homeowner's situation, we have a lot of homes that have been already built within critical areas and their buffers, think pre-1990, you know? So, 1960's home may have been built, you know, I, I continue to think of like the apartments on Juanita Creek, you know, built very much into the critical area buffer. And those are going to be a challenge, you know? We do have some flexibility in being able to do additions in those specific situations, but a lot of people have buffers on their property, and they are not impacting them yet, and there are a lot of options there for them to work with. And it really does go to whatever the specific individual situation is. And identifying where that buffer is, and where that critical area is, is, is number one. Once that's done, then opportunities to assist and help. But defining the buildable area on the site is really important before we create decisions.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Pascal.
Yeah, thank you. Wanted to just touch on the, the steep slopes, the geographical, yeah, the, yeah, the steep-slope areas. I mean, just to provide some context to that, you know, it was, we didn't have this type of information or data. I think we enacted this six or seven years ago, perhaps, and it was based upon information that I think that UW did, or their students did through LIDAR. And at the time, we were receiving a number of complaints, and there was some documented situations where, you know, there's some questionable activities happening as part of development, and that's when we enacted this peer review. Because what we were seeing was that we were seeing some questionable consultants, or whoever was doing these, these reviews, there were some problems with, with them. And so, we wanted to have the ability to make sure that there was someone kind of looking over the shoulder, and, and making sure that we were getting that independent review. Since that time, you know, I haven't heard of situations, you know? It feels like we have, that that legislation and those regulations have addressed some of those issues that we had been seeing in building. But we have, what we do recognize, that it maybe is a little more stringent than we had anticipated, where, you know, we're peer reviewing things that just, I think, are, you know, situations that I don't think we need to. But we still need to have that flexibility to require that, and I think that's what you're proposing, right? As, under certain situations, staff would still be able to require a peer review, but in other situations, it wouldn't be necessary. Is that, are those the changes that you're looking to make?
Yeah, that's kind of what we're thinking as far as that threshold. It would, it would be those really smaller projects. We get, we've gotten similar feedback for, say, "Oh, I have to add one footing for a deck extension." Is this necessary? Is this too much process?
Yeah.
And working with experts, you know, some of our consultants, or subject matter experts as a whole, of, that would be challenging to come up with what that threshold is, but that's kind of what we're working on and what we're going to figure out. And making sure that we build in the ability to do peer review, you know, kind of like what Anna was saying with, at least with Chapter 90, since it can be nuanced, having, having that ability to call on that third party, maybe even those small things if needed.
Yeah, I kind of, I kind of think of it as a scale, like before, you know, we didn't have that ability. Well, we wrote regulations to require it. Now, we're looking to maybe kind of right-size it a little bit based upon our experience. So, that makes, that makes a lot of sense to me, and look forward to kind of seeing where we land. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Following up on a couple of questions, like for the hazardous slopes, we've done LIDAR, we know how much landmass is considered a hazardous slope in, in Kirkland. You may have said this, but do we know how much of Kirkland would be, would be called a critical area zone? What is the percentage of Kirkland? I'm just curious. I know how many watersheds we have.
We can find that number for you.
Yeah.
We have some fantastic GIS experts.
Okay.
Can do that.
Great. Anyone else? Thank you, guys. We'll see you in the fall.
All right. Thank you.
All right. We are now moving on to 9B, Peter Kirk Pool enclosure options. City Manager.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, we're checking back in again with council to see about the next steps on covering the Peter Kirk Pool. I'm here to give you this presentation is our Parks and Community Services Director, Lynn Zwachstra, and our Deputy Parks and Community Service Director, John Lloyd.
Thank you, City Manager Triplet. Thank you, City Council. Good to see you again. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for the lovely Parks and Rec Month proclamation, and for all of your support for everything we do. As you just heard, we are here to discuss potential enclosure options for the Peter Kirk Pool, kind of revisiting our discussion from March. I have a few more slides than the last presentation. I've got about 27, lots of pictures, unfortunately, lots of numbers, too. But overall, tonight, what we're looking for is looking for some direction from City Council as to whether or not you want to enclose the pool, and if one of the options we present tonight is the direction you're looking to go, or if you'd like us to go in a different direction. I'll provide you some background about the current pool, an overview of the baseline scope of work that we're recommending get done regardless of the direct decision to enclose the pool or not. Jump into the enclosure options, and we'll talk construction and operating costs, and... construction and operating costs and potential funding to how we pay for this all. And then talk about where we go from here. So, we will jump right in. Just a few highlights of our current pool, just to give you a frame where we're at. It's only open from late May to Labor Day every summer, so about three months of the year. Right now, at any given time, we can fit 310 people in the pool, most of which are in the lap pool, 40 of which in that waiting pool area. Last year, we had 562 different swim lesson classes offered, which accommodated over 2,000 individuals. And some of those people repeat because they might be in four classes in a row. But 2,000 people were signed up in those classes. Unfortunately, that was also, we had nearly three times as many people on the waitlist at the end of the year. Again, people repeat themselves on the waitlist because they're trying to get into multiple spots. But this is kind of just highlighting the overwhelming demand we've got for swim lessons at the pool. In addition to the pool, we try to maximize the use of it. We offer different times for open swim and lap swim throughout the week. Right now, it's about 31 hours a week of open swim. Last year, that was, was over 18,000 people that participated in that. And then about 15 hours per week dedicated to lap swim. You can obviously lap swim during open swim, but there's a lot more noise and playing going on, so it's a lot harder to do. About 2,000 people took advantage of our lap swim opportunities. So, with that, I'm going to jump into the different, or the baseline scope of work recommendation. Pause, see if you guys have any questions on that, and then we'll jump into the enclosure options. So, like I said before, this is our recommendation on work that should be done regardless of whether we move forward with an enclosure or not. Part of the study that we conducted was to assess the current conditions of the pool and what would be needed to keep that thing running into the future. The main and primary recommendation that we want to address is separating out the mechanical systems of the two pools. Right now, they operate as one giant body of water. So, if there's an accident in one pool, both pools get shut down. It also means that our lap pool has to be 88 degrees, 86 degrees, which is about 10 degrees hotter than most lap swimmers would want it. And we do that to keep it warm enough for the swim lessons. By separating the two bodies of water, you'd be able to have two separate sanitation systems, two separate heating systems, you could have different temperatures, and just create all, much more expanded use. Part of this repair, or part of this work would also be to replace the failing boiler that we have right now that we're putting Band-Aids on on a pretty regular basis to keep that water warm. In order to accommodate that additional mechanical space, we would either need to expand the mechanical building that we're in. But what we're recommending doing is taking over part of the lifeguard office to, which is, they're shared in the same building there, expand the mechanical space into the guard office and construct a new lifeguard office and pool entry at the south end of the pool. This was just one option that was proposed. We'll get into it a little bit later. We would need to kind of evaluate all the infrastructure in that area to see if it actually is feasible. It does fit, but it's just a matter of making sure it works, making sure we can, it doesn't disrupt traffic and all the rest of that stuff. At that new entry, it would include a new lifeguard office, like I mentioned, and it would include three all-gender slash family changing rooms to accommodate anyone and everyone that wants a little bit more privacy than our current locker room provides. This would also take care of all the immediate infrastructure needs that were identified in the assessment. Some of the major ones were, the pool deck is, has some significant cracking and damage. We need to replace that. And there were several ADA deficiencies noted in both the 2022 Pro's Plan as well as this study. And then, we are already starting work on replacing the drain covers of the lap pool to be compliant with the Virginia Graham Baker Pool and Spa Safety Act. Those expire at the end of September, so we actually have to get those replaced to continue operating the pool at all. So, we're already in the design phase of that and getting going there, so. Included these pictures in your memo. This is just one concept that the consultants proposed. Like I said, we'd want to kind of further study this. But this moves the entryway to the south end. So, from where it is here in the current building, we would relocate it down here to the south. This would serve as the new entry point for the pool as well as those family changing rooms. I had a thought on this. I lost my train of thought. But I had an idea on this one, but I can't remember what it was. Anywho, this, this could be designed in any number of ways. One thought I've had, we've explored ways that we can provide showers for the community. We could design this in such a way that it could accommodate that, depending on how it works with the pool. I remembered my thought. The other reason why this was recommended is it actually brings the entry closer to the showers. Right now, you have to walk across the pool deck to get to the showers, and most people don't. This brings you through the locker room much closer, makes it much easier to enforce showering before you get in the water, which helps keep the pool running. All in, so, the March consultant report by, from SCAMADA included construction costs and some other soft costs, but it didn't include all of the soft costs that the city applies. So, I worked with our CIP group to review the cost estimates provided, built in and added in all the rest of the city's soft costs, including design, in-house management, permits, et cetera. All in, the baseline scope of work is about $7 million. So, yeah. Pause there, see if anyone has questions.
Thank you. I was going to suggest that. Councilmember Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you for this. I have a question about the, I mean, I like, and I've said before, you know, I like the addition of, you know, moving the location of the entrance and everything you said makes sense and adding the family changing rooms and the, and the lifeguard room. That's fantastic. Is there anything in this budget that you're presenting to upgrade or do any improvements to the existing restroom and shower facilities that are there next to the proposed new building?
There may have been some minor upgrades to the finishes and whatnot, but it wasn't a major overhaul of the structure.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sweet?
Thanks, John. This is exciting that that poor old pool is really weathering it.
Almost 60 years old.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember that. Anyway, now you made me lose my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, this baseline scope, would this be considered regular maintenance?
I think it's a little beyond regular maintenance when you're actually moving and expanding the bath house and, or the.
Okay, but in sort of the sense of we have capital budget.
Yes, the splitting of the pools and a lot of this would be regular maintenance.
Okay. And that's how we're going to end up paying for a lot of this work?
Yes.
I would assume. Okay, that's all I need.
Councilmember Tim Chisen?
This option is no enclosure, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? So, I want to go back to Councilmember Falcone's question. The existing bath house is cinder block. And so, are we going to build the addition out of cinder block? Or is it going to be more winterized than the old portion? What's our vision there?
The current one can survive in the winter. It's not, it doesn't, it just costs a little bit more because you're running more heat.
More heat, okay.
So, there would be some upgrades to it. They looked at it and actually weren't as concerned about the winterization of that building. And so, it's built with nice-looking cinder blocks on the outside at least. So, they did talk about matching the aesthetic on the outside.
Really?
Could be. I mean, nice and cinder block is kind of an oxymoron, but it's the nicest-looking cinder block you can get.
So, we're imagining the new part is going to look somewhat similar to the old part.
That's usually what I like to do, is make them look like you don't, doesn't look like a weird appendage off the side of it that was added on for some reason. But we can do whatever you want.
Just comparing it to Juanita Beach.
We could do something.
All right, let's go on. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to jump into the enclosure options. These are based on your feedbacks and feedback from Park Board. All of these options include that baseline scope of work. So, when we're talking about numbers at the end, it's not plus $7 million. The $7 million is already in there, so I just want to make sure you know that. And then I included various pictures of the different types of enclosures to hopefully give you a sense of the look and feel of them because that was one of the pieces of feedback we got from Park Board in January, was the aesthetics of the structure. And then, these are just four options. There's a lot of ways we can do this. So, if there's other ideas, we can come up with other ideas. Option one, so this is kind of our full-meal deal using the open-air style enclosure, which I heard dubbed the Crystal Palace last time we met. And it's a nice, big glass or glass-style enclosure. This one, we would cover both pools. We would renovate the, we would replace the small current waiting pool with a new activity pool. And I'm going to jump into that one in the next option, but it is included in this option. That, the new activity pool would provide additional recreational programming opportunities just based on its increased size and the design features that could be included. In the pictures, I'll talk about what's included once we get to those pictures. But like I mentioned earlier, we would definitely be able to have separate warmer water temperature in this pool, and it would be dedicated for more recreation and fun. This option could be phased into multiple phases if you wanted to chunk it out and do different things over time, which is essentially what options two and three are. But jumping into the cost on this one, as I said, it's a full-meal deal, Crystal Palace. You would think it would have the highest expense, and it does. This one was estimated at about $32.5 million all in for the construction of that one. Just to give you guys a scope of what this gets us in terms of programming, just a reminder, currently, we were able to offer 562 swim lessons that served about 2,000 students. This one would add an additional 2,200 classes, serving almost another 8,000 students. And those are, that is additive. Budget is not additive. Those numbers are additive. Same thing on the open and lap swim hours. Right now, it's about 460 hours during the kind of current season, almost tripling that with another 1,450 hours of open swimming opportunities.
Let's pause. I think we have questions on option one. Councilmember Tim Chisen?
Thank you. Couple of general questions. One, do any of these plans contemplate any changes in the parking areas to the east or west of the pool?
No.
Okay. Two, do you feel constricted by this piece of land? This, this piece of land is sandwiched in between the library parking lot and the parking lot for the teen center. And do you feel like, when you've been doing this project, has it been pretty workable with the land you've got? Or do you, is this, is this piece of land essentially unfit? My question is, is the investment of major dollars in this piece of land, which doesn't seem expandable? I don't know. Tell me how you feel about that.
I feel more restricted by the, by our budget because I think we could do a whole lot with this space. If you gave me a blank check, I could build a beautiful pool in that same exact spot. I think with the current pool we have and providing an enclosure, I think we've got plenty of space and plenty of room there. I don't think, I'm worried about the space. That pool, we do a lot with it and we make good use of it. I think we could continue to do so with an enclosed version of the current pool.
Okay.
It's not going to be a brand-new, world-class offering that you might see somewhere else if we built a brand-new one or for the ballot measure passed a few years ago. But I still think it would serve the community quite well.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, John.
Okay, moving to option two. Essentially, it's a scaled-down version of option one. You could look at it as almost phase one of option one. This would do the, only enclose the activity pool that we mentioned in option one, also using the open-air style structure. As you can see in this image, it would leave the lap pool uncovered, which was some of the feedback we did receive, is that folks do like an outdoor pool. They want to play in the summer outside. And like today is like today when it's 85 degrees outside, you want to be outside in the warm. So, this would continue to provide that. This one, obviously, by enclosing the activity pool, which I already mentioned would be a wonderful spot for swim lessons, would be a huge start and a great jump towards providing that additional swim lessons for the community. This one, significantly less than the last pool because we're not cover, our last option, because we're not covering as much space. And we're projecting this one to cost around $17 million. And then, just to share the impact, again, going from 562 sessions of swim lessons, we'd be able to add another 952 sessions of swim lessons with this option. I'll pause here, see if any questions on this one.
Sorry, I'm participating rather than managing the team. All right, Councilmember Black. Councilmember.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
John, just one question. If I'm remembering correctly, are the public comments that we received, one of the comments we received had to do with year-round use of an outdoor lap pool. What's your reaction to that?
It's possible. Prior to the pandemic, we actually had rented the pool to wave while they were working on the road. But they've used it November through the middle of, or until we shut it down in February when the pandemic happened. Swimmers will swim in whatever you let them swim. It's just a matter of, the utility cost is going to be pretty substantial to keep that water warm externally. The budgets that we're going to jump into don't contemplate this, but it is certainly something we could extend the shoulder seasons and maybe exclude just the heart of winter or not. Or we could choose to extend it year-round. I think we could analyze that and see if there is an interest. Essentially, if you're going to, if you're going to be doing it, you're going to be paying the utility cost to keep that water warm either way. So, if you're going to open it for two hours or eight hours, you're still spending that utility money to spend the, to get the water warm, so.
Okay, one clarifying follow-up. Thank you for that. One clarifying follow-up. With the $7 million baseline, does that winterize the existing locker room? Like, what?
We would be able to use the existing locker room throughout the winter, yes.
Perfect. You answered my question. Thank you.
Councilmember Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you, John. I have a question about the activity pool, the new activity pool. I know that you mentioned increased swim lesson capacity. And I know I snuck a peek at option three in some of the notes around in additional swim lesson capacity as well, but maybe not for the youngest swimmers. I know how it currently is. Obviously, it's really only for like babies and toddlers, right? And that, like, you know, the, for example, the, we heard comment tonight about wanting to have a program for all second graders in the school district to have, be able to have swim lessons. Obviously, the current pool would not work for second graders, right? They're way too, too big to, for the current depth of the pool. Can you just refresh my memory on, on that for the, the plan for the activity pool, like, the depth of it and what it could be used for? Could it be used for more advanced swim lessons as well? Because I know, like, if we covered just the lap pool, we could have a lot more swim lessons, but maybe not for like toddlers, right? Probably for babies, we could, because it's usually like a grown-up and a baby, but not for toddlers. And then, is, do we have the opposite problem with the activity pool that like more advanced swim lessons that are learning their, and perfecting their different strokes and things, wouldn't be able to swim the laps because it's just too shallow or too small of a pool for that?
So, I apologize. I had meant to cover a lot of those details on this slide, but I mentioned some of them earlier. But I will walk through this concept of the activity pool, which will address some of that. First, this is just a concept that has not been designed. So, we could design whatever we want that fits in that space to get what we want. And they had presented three different options in the feasibility study, and so this was the one that we liked best. To look at this image, I'll use the mouse rather than pointing at a screen. As you can see, this is probably double the size of the current waiting pool. You can kind of see it's hovering in the background or hiding in the background there. This one includes an ADA zero-depth entry ramp, so you could walk in from there. It includes stairs. You've got your accessible lift here. This little dash line is showing a volleyball net across the pool. You've got a basketball hoop over here. This is showing a small bench on this area, which could be used for seating. And then, this area is used, I'm kind of assuming for like a walking lap lane or that. I've designed a rec pool that had a regulation 25-yard lane in it. So, folks could, so again, you could design it however you want, where it could be used for more advanced swim lesson. I think we could accommodate probably most of the swim lessons. I would have to check with our aquatics folks at the upper levels. It certainly wouldn't accommodate swim team or full-on masters level stroke development. But it's, I'm guessing for the folks that are trying to learn to swim and level the younger kids, even up to the more advanced levels, but not advanced swim team-type skills, this could serve most of our stuff.
Thank you, thank you. And could it serve, like, I think of, you know, some folks that do like water aerobics and things like that? Would it be?
Yeah, and one of the stats that I didn't include, because I was focusing on swim lessons and whatnot, and I can get that to you, was the number of aquatic Group X classes that we could offer in this pool. This would be a great opportunity for that because it's, again, shallow water, warmer water. But again, you can make it, you could go down to as much depth as you want. I wouldn't see this one getting deeper than five feet at any one point, but it could be three feet the whole, the whole way through. I mean, it'd certainly be deeper than the current waiting pool.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Sweet?
Oh, thank you. If you're going to put a basketball hoop in it, though, don't you need at least five feet?
No.
No? Short?
It's, I mean, it's not a real game, so people can play with whatever they want.
Okay.
I think you actually, I like it when it's shallower because you can jump out of it a little easier versus having to try and like pull yourself out of the water. But again, this area could be designed to be a little bit deeper.
Okay, so, I mean, really, the bottom is wherever we want to put it, essentially. Okay, so, I mean, really, the bottom is wherever we want to put it, essentially. And this, I just want to clarify one more time, that the original seven million is not in this package.
This includes the seven million dollars.
It does include it.
So this would do all of the separating of the two pools, the expanded bathhouse, new entry, and enclosing this pool.
Okay, so the additional cost for this is ten million dollars?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
John, before we move on, there, that's what I want to see. Swim lessons, you, Councilor Falcone, you responded to her, and you talked about, where is the greatest need in our swim lessons? What age group are we having where we're not fulfilling the community's need? Is it learn to swim?
I will have to ask, I don't know off the top of my head, and I don't want to say something that's wrong.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
So option three is kind of the flip side of option two. This one would enclose just the lap pool, again, using an open-air style enclosure. This option would not renovate the waiting pool. The waiting pool would remain a waiting pool, and would remain uncovered. That is the big difference of this option. Again, it would include the, you can see the renovated bathhouse in the yellow up in the top there. Cost estimates for this were a little bit more expensive than option two, but it was looking at about twenty-two million dollars. This option does actually provide more in terms of swim lesson sessions available, because there's more water, we can fit more people in those various spots. We would have a hard time doing the youngest of kids, and there are ways you can accommodate that with little underwater platforms you can build and things of that nature, but it would certainly be a little bit more of a challenge to accommodate the youngest of our swim lesson participants with this option. Questions on this one?
Don't see any. Oh, Councilor Falcone?
I just want to clarify, when you say that it would be a challenge for the youngest, it's really like that toddler age, right? Like the preschool, like babies are good, and then like, school age are good, it's really just that like, two, three-year-old kind of, thank you.
Our fourth option is essentially the same as option one, a full enclosure of both pools, renovating the activity pool, but in this option, we're showing it using the sprung structure, so not the air-inflated structure, this was the more rigid structure. On this page, it shows a couple images, it's a little dark on the screen up top there, but really, once you get a sense of what they look like. This option significantly cheaper than option one, but still, twenty, almost twenty-one million dollars is the projection for the cost of this. And then just to kind of reiterate, or continue the theme of the program increase, these numbers are the same as option one in terms of the added capacity. The primary concern that I have, and I think most folks have had, is with the aesthetics of the sprung structure, but it is a much more affordable option.
Council, any questions on option four? They hate it.
Okay, so, just to put them side by side, so you can kind of get a sense, because like I said, a lot of numbers, a lot of pictures as well. Here are the four options, with the cost ranging from option one up to thirty, almost thirty-two and a half million, seventeen, to around twenty-two, twenty-three million dollars. I'll pause with this.
Councilor Tim Chisen?
One question, what is the, is there a projected lifespan of these options?
I didn't get an exact number, but I feel like it's twenty to thirty years, but.
Okay, that's what they said sixty years ago when they built that pool.
We've put a lot of work into that pool, so.
But, thank you.
Councilor Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do you know, I mean, we talked about, like joking about the Crystal Palace, you know, option, is that, like, how sturdy is that glass? Could someone throw rocks at it and it shatters? Like, how, I just, I worry about vandalism with this type of thing, such a big.
Yes, someone could throw a rock at it and break it. There's a lot of windows on a lot of buildings. One of the things they recommended was, on a current project they're doing, is they tried to do setbacks where they'll like put it behind a fence and ten feet back from that, so you can't do that. The sprung structure, they do offer like a rigid wall panel, so the lower half would like, because it's essentially a membrane, and one of the questions the park board had was like, can you just cut through that? But you can make the lower like eight feet of rigid membrane. In general, they weren't too concerned about the vandalism or folks breaking them, my guess is because they're probably pretty strong windows, and, but it's going to take a strong throw to break it, but someone could break a window, for sure.
Okay, thank you. And along that line, have we thought of other, like, more traditional building structures? Is that something that's even feasible, like building a regular building around?
It is, but it's more expensive.
Okay, thank you.
That was part of the assessment, so. I'm gonna, Lynn's gonna come up and talk some of the funding options available.
Before we move on, you didn't happen to create a slide that compares each option with the swim lessons fulfilled?
I did not. I thought about it.
Councilor Pascal also has.
Oh, okay. And you said that you talked to.
I can send that out tonight.
Okay, you said you talked to Park Board, did they have a preference? All right, you could go to that later. Councilor Pascal.
A question on the costs, again, if you can flip back to the other slide. So, so the total amounts there at the bottom, we would be spending seven million for the base, and that's included in all of those costs?
Yes.
Correct? And so what's the confidence level in these costs? Because I don't, I don't know that I see a contingency or anything. Do you know?
There's contingencies built in, I just didn't give every little detail in here. Sorry. They are not escalated out, so I think there's some lack of confidence for the long term, their current year dollars, but there is, I'm as confident as I can be from coming from the professional estimators, because I don't know how much these things cost.
Yeah, okay, so there's contingencies built in, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now, cost.
Okay, you've actually seen this slide before, this was presented at the council budget retreat just a few weeks ago. Finance put together some information on funding that could be available. We have up to eighteen million dollars potentially available for the project. There's two numbers up there that we don't know about yet, and that's the King County Parks Levy. Two point five million is earmarked in the King County Parks Levy, so if that levy passes, we could see that funding. The grant, however, for five million would have to be awarded, we've already submitted for that in 2025, and we're awaiting the grant recommendations. Now, if we're unsuccessful in 2025, we could turn around again because of the timing of this project and apply again in 2027. So there's a reasonable chance we'd be able to get some additional funding from the levy. Now, Deputy Mayor Arnold mentioned at the retreat that there's some opportunity cost with this type of thing. The funding that you see up here is the majority of our capital funding available. So we have a couple of high priority needs, which are mostly infrastructure, like Houghton Beach restroom, and we also have the marine, not marina, sorry, Marsh Park and Settlers Landing docks that are still pending in the Dock and Shoreline projects. Having said that, this funding can't be used for those projects because they don't qualify for impact fees. So really, what the opportunity we're talking about is things like synthetic turf, you know, so any sort of added capacity, an expansion of a playground, new amenities such as pickleball court, that type of thing. And of course, one of the things we're trying to do is add, you know, kind of incremental amenities to help with the population growth. So that's kind of the opportunity cost there. And then, the next slide is about the operating expenses, so the purpose of this slide is just to remind ourselves that we're not just talking about capital. When we talk about program expansion, we're also talking about the expansion of operating funding. So there's a couple of things about these numbers that I wanted to point out. First and foremost, they're in 2027 numbers, dollars. So everything has been escalated to 2027, since we wouldn't really be able to operate an expansion till 2027. And then the second thing is, they're all standalone, not too dissimilar to how we presented the capital cost. So the current seasonal pool, you can see, costs a seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand to operate. That seven twenty-seven is in each of the other three. So in other words, full enclosure, options one and four, that's the sum total budget, it's not that plus the seasonal budget. So when you look at the full enclosure, and it says that there's a net operating expense of one point seven million, also have to take into consideration, we were already incurring three hundred and twelve thousand of that. So really, the new net is an additional one point four, if that makes sense. So that's kind of the numbers. Any questions on that?
Council, questions on this slide? Councilor Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's not on this slide, it's on the previous slide. I don't think you specifically talked about the neighborhood park land acquisition. Well, I guess you did. But you didn't mention that this is also, the pool, the park land acquisition impact fees are, it's for turf and other capacity, it's also for acquiring arc lands.
Right, right.
Specifically.
Yeah.
Which have been identified in our, we have areas of our city that have been specifically identified in the.
Yeah, we absolutely do.
Arcs Recreation Open Space Plan for acquisition.
Yeah, yeah, and there's one parcel we've been going after for eight years. One of these days, it might be successful.
So metaphorically speaking, we're taking all our chips and we're putting them on the table for indoor aquatics.
Yes.
At least for a period of time until impact fees, we rebuild the land acquisition reserves.
Yeah, and this uses them through 2028, so starting in 2029, we'd be rebuilding.
Okay, that's helpful to know, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Then, looking at the operational costs, the capital costs, looks like those are reserves that we already have or anticipate, given existing revenue streams, impact fees, and others. For the operating expenses, is this all general fund that we would have to figure out how to budget?
Yes.
And beyond the three hundred and twelve thousand, this is additional general fund costs that we'd have to figure out in 2027, competing with other needs of the city?
Yeah, it sure would. Now, they are initial projections, and we can often tighten the numbers as we get closer to fully understanding exactly what we'll be programming. Also, with that understanding, we can kind of look into more partnerships, like you heard earlier in public comment, the second grade swim lessons. So if we know exactly what we're building and programming, we could talk about a partnership like that, and see, again, the impact on some additional revenue. I think that the activity pool-only option is unique and interesting. Perhaps we could actually tighten the expense budget on that one a little bit, but it's the most economic one from an annual operating perspective. That one didn't, however, take into account operating the lap pool in the winter, which is a real potential. So we could develop that number for you as well. What's really interesting about it is, the activity pool is what would accommodate the youngest children, like we've talked about, you know, your ages two and three, and your older kids, in particular, though, your lap swimming and your competitive teams, they will swim in the lap pool in the winter. You really can't do swim lessons outside for the little kids in the winter. So a lot of interesting considerations up here.
With that, I will summarize our conversation with Park Board from last week. We presented a similar presentation, and they had a lot of good questions that helped me make sure I included a lot more information for you guys tonight. They preferred option two, because it focused on swim lessons, and they really liked how it served a broad variety of folks in that one. I didn't present them the numbers that I showed you guys, so it wasn't just kind of compelling to sell, oh, if you cover the lap pool, it's more swim lesson spots. I think they liked that you could serve more age groups in the activity pool. They also just liked the activity pool in general for the added recreational opportunities compared to the current waiting pool. And then, they also asked about the use of the lap pool in the winter, so that is a theme that has come about in that. And then they also asked if a smaller pool-only ballot measure would be a potential consideration to fund this sort of project. I did give them a little background about the post-ballot measure discussion, and how the survey did not show that a smaller measure was good at that time, but sometimes you wait a day and things change, so I told them I would ask. So with that, that's all the information we've got. What we're looking for from you tonight is, do you want to continue pursuing enclosing the pool? If so, do you like one of these options, or do you want us to look at any other options? With that, I'll turn it over to you all.
Councilor Sweet?
I'll go ahead and start. Oh my God, this is so hard. I get why the Park Board chose option two, for all the reasons that they did choose it. I guess what's missing for me is the balance in the checkbook. So, one of the things that I don't, I don't want to give up on yet is, are there any alternatives? So, in our parade on Friday, we have Goldfish Swim School is participating in our parade. And I've done a little research, since I had a meeting with Kurt the other day, they have a fairly medium-sized swimming pool that they simply put in a storefront. I don't know what it costs to put in, I'm interested in it, in terms of, is it a model? And they are busy as can possibly be, and they're excited to be in the parade. It's a franchise kind of a thing that's out there, and they particularly do little kids' classes. There's another organization called Swim Quick, which sometimes leases space, and then there's Redmond Swim, which rents space from the Twenty-four Hour Fitness. And all of these things together are the things that Redmond is doing to meet their critical, or meet at whatever level, but they are able to meet their swimming needs. That's an area that I don't think that we have investigated as fully as we could. I know that I met last year with the owner of Columbia Athletic Club, who was very interested in having a discussion, although one part of the family thinks they're too busy, and the other part of the family thinks they have capacity. But I think these are things that we should investigate. I'm reticent about committing, particularly in this environment, about committing so many capital dollars to this project. So I want to make sure that there aren't other swimming, I mean, like Bridle Trails, they have a swimming pool up there, it'll be there as long as Rico owns the property till they redevelop it. I don't know what the capacity is, I don't know how much use it gets, but I just feel like there are maybe some options that we could investigate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, so thank you, John, for the presentation, Lynn, and for the work. I will say, you've done an amazing job of presenting the options and the information. Obviously, we still have questions, and some of that, that's out of your control. But just really appreciate the work that has gone into this, so thank you very much for that. And I'm sorry that you're probably not going to get a decision tonight, if that's what you were hoping. So the.
I was expecting kind of a, there's a lot to figure out here, so.
Yeah, so, one, I have a question and then a couple of comments. First, my question, it has to do with the county levy. I think probably every, all my colleagues at the dais know the timing, but just for the public, can we remind everyone when we'll have more information about the success or failure of the county levy that has the capital dollars in it, that could be used for this project?
It's the August election, so however long it takes to certify that would be when we would know.
Yep.
Probably by the first week after the election, we'll know.
Yep.
Unless it's super, super tight, so probably by mid-August.
Yep, that was a leading question, I just wanted it out there for the public, so the public knows when we're going to know more. So that's one thing, we're going to have a lot, the point being, there's actually a point, which is that come first, second, third week of August, we're going to have more information about the funds available for this type of project. And I think that's an important point. And I think we also, we're in the middle of working with the Kraken on a potential proposal that could, city manager, if I'm not mistaken, could, some of these dollars, there could be some overlap in the dollars that we would use to help fund. there could be some overlap in the dollars that we would use to help fund the indoor recreation facility at the Kraken facility, that we would be, we have to program them one place or the other, we can't program them both places. Is that fair to say, too?
Fair to say, yeah.
Okay. And that deal hasn't been inked yet, so that's another piece of information we don't have yet. And then I'll just lend my voice to what Councilmember Sweet was saying, just explore. I do want to, I do want to make sure, and also credit to Councilmember Tim Chisholm from, I think the last meeting, we talked about the same concept, that we're talking about a lot of dollars, and just, right now, we're focused correctly on what we can do at this site, but just lending my voice to those who've said, okay, if we're going to spend 17 million, and this is what we're going to get, are there other avenues that we could get basically the same number of swim lessons for the same groups of kids for same price, lower price, easier, simpler operational costs? I just, so as amazing job as the Parks Department has done in providing us information, I just think there's that additional uncertainty, too, that I would want to make sure I understood, and I think I'm hearing from at least a couple, if not all, of my colleagues that same thing. So with that, with that, I'll yield. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Tim Chisholm.
Thank you. Thank you for the Councilmember Sweet and Black. At the risk of being repetitive, I will lend support for option two, to keep option two as on the table as an option. As we approach the $32 million price tag, I have to wonder what the cost of the Columbia Athletic Club, Gold's Gym, or other swim facilities are in the purchase or rental of those facilities, or the Cyan Swimming Facility, which is in Bridle Trails, things like that. I don't know if I asked this question, but I'm not sure if the construction here would shut down the pool for multiple years, and that would be a concern of mine also.
I, we would have to look into that, I don't know what the construction timing would be and how that would look, but I think we would, we would certainly want to try and minimize any impact of the summer, at least.
But looking, I mean, to Councilmember Sweet and Black's point, looking at partnerships with existing pools puts us, you know, in a, maybe in a quicker time horizon. But as we, as we approach option one, I would have questions about whether to stay at that location or do something completely new. I can't support inflatable or sprung structures. I just can't do it. But I do think that this is, you know, at this point, I know that we're, I'm planning a pool for other children and probably not my own. But I do think that this is, this is a priority, and we've been through ballot measures and been through other arduous processes, and I do think that I would like to find a option, choose it, and drive at it to make it happen within, you know, by the end of 2026. So there's my man-on-the-moon speech. And I, it's just, we've bounced this idea, and it's been going for years, and we really are at a place where people that can afford private clubs, like myself, can teach their kids to swim, and those who can't, can't. And that's where we are in Kirkland. And so I, I feel strongly that we should make this a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, and then Councilmember Pascal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Really appreciate this discussion, this is, this is hard. We've taken a number, to mix my metaphors, we've taken a number of swings at this particular thing, and it's very hard. First, one observation on the creative thinking that's happening about other pool that already exists, and whether there are opportunities there. One of the things that these options we're looking at do is provide more capacity. When we're looking at, you know, what's the opportunity to take over some other pool, the benefit there is just saying, how would we program that differently? It's not necessarily providing additional capacity. It may make it more accessible to people that can afford the private lessons, but it's not solving the problem that we need more aquatics facilities in our communities. That said, and I appreciate the work that's gone on here, I think you have showed a future roadmap of saying, we could do this over time and stage the activity pool and option two, and then later do the lap pool and get to this thing in pieces over time. However, I would pause on this process, if we were deciding today, I would pause on this process for a couple of reasons. One is the opportunity cost. Lynn, one opportunity cost you didn't mention was the roof for the community center. That's about a $6 million investment, and that would be my priority for the capital dollars. I don't want to give that up, even if we weren't going to build it. I think it would be malpractice to build a community center that doesn't allow that future roof access. That would be first. Second thing, we have an operational cost, and as was mentioned, these are general fund dollars. And in the consent calendar today, our financial reports are saying our general fund dollars are coming in right at budget. Previously, we've had, with our conservative budgeting, they've come in ahead of time, and we've had more money to invest in things. Now, our conservative budget is saving us because as we face economic uncertainty, revenues are coming in at budget, but it doesn't give us that extra revenue to do new things. And the new things that we'll be talking about in parks are going to be operating that community center that we're going to be building in partnership with the Kraken, and that would be my top priority for new operational money in parks. So I think we do need to go through the baseline work and want that to continue forward. I think we're on the right track as far as the plans, but I would pause on this whole process and focus on the Kraken community facility and come back in future, and I think this is years from now, I think this is a future biennial for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pascal.
Thank you. You know, a lot of good comments so far, thanks for all the work you've done, John and team. I'd certainly support more aquatic space, aquatic facilities. You know, I think maybe unlike some of the others, I was surprised at how fast you moved in preparing some options here with costs. It came a lot faster than I realized or thought that it would come before us to make a decision. That's good and bad. You know, I do think it is just, for me, it's about all the other competing demands and opportunity costs, and really trying to weigh this against all those other needs. And I feel like I don't have a good understanding of those. So it's really about timing, and so I do agree with the Deputy Mayor about pausing, pausing this for now. I think there are those things that I want to understand with the Kraken, with the Parks levy, and then the other thing out there that I think someone mentioned earlier was the field feasibility study that I believe is due to us in the fall, and that would compete for some of the same money, perhaps, if we were to move forward with an all-season field somewhere else. So I'd like to have all that at my fingertips before committing us to a pretty sizable investment and making sure that we're picking the right thing and understand the operational costs going forward and how we'll pay for those. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Falcón.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's been some really good comments from my council colleagues tonight that I really appreciate, very thoughtful. I have some similar thoughts. I do think, considering the funding, that waiting until we have more concrete answers on the Kraken facility as well as the Parks levy, I don't know that I think that this is multiple years out, that I want to have this conversation again, but I would certainly like to have more concrete, you know, decisions made on those two things to feel confident about that. I, also thinking about opportunity costs, Deputy Mayor makes a good point about the community center and just preparing the building for potential future use of the roof there. That's also something that's a really high priority for me, as, you know, as is increasing aquatics facility capacity and swim lessons for, particularly for our children and youth. So that's going to be a tough one, but I do think that having the answers and having the final decisions made on the path forward for the Parks levy funding and the Kraken would be really helpful. That said, I feel like, you know, from reading the memo and what we've heard tonight, option two makes the most sense. And I agree with Councilmember Tim Chisholm, I'd like to keep that on the table for discussion and consideration, but I'd like to pause this discussion, again, probably not for a couple of years, but maybe a few months. Thank you.
Councilmember Tim Chisholm.
Well, to the, so Mr. Triplet, several members of the council have asked for these data points or additional information, and realistically, when would we have those, you know, that information by? Because I respectfully don't want to see this just kicked down the road indefinitely.
I think you realistically have that information by September, so you're going to have a Kraken agreement come to you, hopefully August 6th. There probably have to be a conversation about the roof or not the roof in that as well. But that will be something you'll act on either August 6th, or if we're not quite there, the council needs more time, it could be the first meeting in September, then we'll have the park levy, will have been voted on, and we'll know if it passed or not. So, you know, at a minimum, in early to mid-September, you'll have at least those two pieces of information, and then we have the budget process that we have and where we do the mid-bye budget check-in in October, November, so you'll have more financial information as well, following those two things.
We'll also likely hear about the King County grant that we applied for in August or September, too.
Given that timeline, and, you know, my feedback would be, I would like to see this come back, absolutely come back before the end of 2025, in the September, October timeframe, you know, when the city manager deems it appropriate, but I don't want to, I don't want to let this slide into forever.
Thank you. Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. And John, you just brought up the grant fund, and it reminded me of a question I meant to ask. How, what's our level of confidence on the grant, on the grant fund at that number versus, we'll grant you the, you got the grant, but we're cutting it in half to 2.5 million? I'm just, want to get a sense of that. And then I know we talked, I know the Parks Director, Lynn, talked about, we could come back in '27. What's
My answer's going to be strong.
Generally speaking, why, why does you, why, if we don't get it in '25, do we, what's our level of confidence in '27?
Yeah, excellent question. The aquatics grant hasn't been quite as competitive as the general capital grants in the past cycle. This cycle, it's extremely competitive, so there are other cities going forward with aquatic projects, there's a lot of aging pools, so it has, in fact, become more competitive. So my confidence for this year is not high, and the reason I say that is the east side cities have not competed well overall for any King County funding because of equity issues, with the top focus on serving the underserved areas of the county. Oftentimes, we would have a better chance the second time around.
And the, John, you, or John said that the grant fund decision will be made in September of this year?
We should know about the recommendations in August.
Okay.
Because it won't be final, because it'll have to go through, you know, King County Council, what would be recommended.
Okay, well, I'm going to add my voice to what Councilmember Tim Chisholm, and maybe one or two of my other colleagues said, which is that it feels like we're going to have a lot of information in August, we're going to have a lot of information come early September, and I feel like there's a check-in, I don't know what to call it. But there's a check-in sometime in this fall on where we're at, for our benefit and the public's benefit, and then, I guess, we'll all have an opportunity to reiterate if this is something we want to, we want to pause for a time. So that's my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you. Ten years, I've been working on this for 10 years. When you run for council, you're like, I'm going to do this, and then you just hit brick walls every step of the way. So this is a little heartbreaking. So I support Councilmember, or I spoke Deputy Mayor, in that the roof Kraken is a priority. I think I agree that not doing that infrastructure now would be a big mistake. I support, it's on our two-year work plan, so I'm unwilling to table this for, it's still in our work plan, as far as I'm concerned, so it does need to come back. I agree that we need to find out about the Parks levy, everything else. I also want to say that there are other grant opportunities in the Parks levy that wouldn't be appropriate for this project, but it may help us fund other projects, such as upgrading play equipment, but I do hear you on the equity issues. What I would like to see, that when we come back to this conversation, is a comparison of the improved programming that we can do for each of the options. I would like to see these side by side. What I think you've heard from the council is option two is sort of the top level. For me, it's option three, just because a quick look at that programming, it looks like we can provide more lessons for students in option three. So I would also like to see, where's the greatest need? Is it the little guys, or is it the grade school, second graders on up? I'd like to take a closer look at the revenue projections. Do we need to raise, do we need to raise cost of swim lessons? I did see in the community, or Parks Rec report, that we are giving out more money in scholarships, which is fabulous, but does that mean that's a greater need, or we're doing a better job of advertising that program? So I would like to look at revenues, what could we recoup with doing water polo or swim lessons or so forth? So I want to take a closer look at the revenue. I would like to see what it would cost to redo the wading pool without the structure, to create the activity pool without a structure, that might be something interesting to do. I'm also curious, we all support and recognize the need for the $7 million improvement, what is the construction timeline? What is the impacts? How are we thinking we're going to program that around our very narrow pool window? So I'm not ready to let go of this, I want to continue this conversation later in the year or early next year, but the realities of the cost is really hard to face, so thank you both.
Thank you. I consider it lucky that we actually have a lot of this information coming in this year so that we can make this type of more strategic decision, so great outcome. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, guys, I'm going to call a quick break, and I wanted to telegraph to you, I'm going to call a break, I know you're being patient, so we'll be back at 9:40.
Have you noticed, me how meeting attend-
Welcome back, everybody. We are now moving to our- oh, are we ready? Thank you. We're now moving on to our last item of business, which is update on the transportation, Transportation Benefit District and two specific improvement projects on 124th Avenue Northeast and in downtown Kirkland. City Manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think you captured that well. I just want to say that this is a follow-up to a direction received from the council last year about making sure we bring you options that arise as we're doing things rather than coming after the fact and saying we wish we had. So, what I want to get is some options that we've thought of for you and want to get your feedback about what decisions you want to make going forward so that we can move these things into design and implementation. So here to give you that presentation is Laura Drake, our Capitol Project Supervisor. Welcome, Laura.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council. Again, I'm Laura Drake, Capitol Project Supervisor, here with an update on the Transportation Benefit District. And as Madam Mayor mentioned, I'll be talking about two specific sets of improvements. But first, I do want to touch briefly on the Transportation Benefit District, or TBD. The background and the current status. We'll touch on the financial picture and then I'll get into the different options we're presenting. And then I have time at the end for discussion and questions. So council activated the TBD back in 2021 with 54 high priority projects from city transportation plans such as our Active Transportation Plan and Safer Routes to School Action Plan. So far, 17 projects are constructed. We have five projects in the construction phase. 18 projects are in design and 14 projects are in pre-design. And we are still on track for completing all of these improvements within the original six-year timeline. Additionally, I want to mention that 54 projects is a lot of projects. So to make things more efficient, we've taken a look at where scopes are similar and the projects are close by in proximity and group those into combined delivery packages. So the first project I'll discuss tonight is one TBD project in one package. The second is five TBD projects in one package. The funding began at $28.6 million and we allocated the funding into the projects based on staff estimates of the final at complete cost of each of these projects, both soft and construction costs. Additionally, we set aside approximately $2.8 million as a overall TBD contingency to be used for projects with unanticipated expenses. Because this is all under the same program of the Transportation Benefit District, the same parent project, we call it, this gives us the flexibility to utilize the money in the TBD contingency when authorized by the city's Director of Finance and Administration. Thus far, projects have been completing under budget and we've actually increased our TBD contingency by nearly a million dollars. It's very exciting. However, as mentioned on the previous slide, we still have a lot of work to do. The remaining projects that are not yet constructed, the ones in pre-design, design, and construction total up to just over $19 million in improvements. So depending on council's decision tonight, first, I want to acknowledge that regardless of the direction we receive, our contingency, the TBD overall contingency, will remain higher than it was at the beginning. And it would be, depending on the choices tonight, between 15 to 19% of the expected remaining project value. So still a very strong contingency as we move forward. All right. So first, I would like to take you to the Kingsgate and Evergreen Hill neighborhood. We have one Safer Routes to School project, very high priority. It is to extend sidewalk along the west side of 124th Avenue. This is just north of Northeast 144th Street. We have a bit of sidewalk there already. We're going to extend that up as far as we can to the city limit. While we were doing site visits and really understanding what this project would be, staff noticed people crossing near Northeast 145th Street. There's no crosswalk there today. So aside from just anecdotal evidence that there might be some need for a crossing here, we did go back and look at the transportation plans. This crossing is not identified, so it wasn't ranked against the other projects. But we do know that in the development of the 2021 Neighborhood Safety Program, this was a requested project from the neighborhood. So we do know the neighborhood's interested. Beyond that, our city staff, especially our Transportation Division engineers and planners, took a really close look at what's going on here. Is there a need for a crosswalk? And yes, there is. On the west side of the street, there's a trail connection to the Nor- the South Norway Hill Park. Also, there's a community facility that's well utilized on the west side. On the east side, there is Safeway in a shopping center with a lot of other businesses. And right at 145th Place, there are bus stops on either side of the road. So there is known desire for pedestrians to cross here. And to utilize the existing crosswalk, you have to go eight- more than 800 feet to the south, wait for the signalized crossing, and then come back another 850 feet to the other side, which is a long way to walk. So with that, we also looked at what would a crosswalk here look like. So per the, per the city crosswalk policy, the minimum we would need to install here is marked crosswalk with curb ramps, appropriate lighting, and a center median. And so that's because of the known vehicle speeds and volumes here. That's a requirement. Additionally, staff did consider are other enhancements appropriate here? And yes, an RRFB enhancement is appropriate here due to the traffic volumes and speeds. So technically not required, but is something that would be appropriate for a long-lasting safety improvement for the public. Looking at the costs, as mentioned previously, any projected shortfall could be filled by the overall TBD contingency. So we do have funding for all of these options. Unfortunately, the baseline improvements are costing more than originally anticipated when this project was first scoped. That's because of the condition of the existing facilities out there. There's more asphalt work, stormwater work, property restoration than we initially anticipated. So that's driving costs up. And we have a projected shortfall of just over $220,000. But if we add a crosswalk, we would already have a contractor out there. So they're already doing similar work to build the sidewalk. And it's actually only $30,000 more if we want to build in that standard crosswalk with signage, markings, and the median island. If we wanted to do a further enhancement, we could choose to install the crosswalk with rapid flashing beacons, bringing the total expected shortfall to $340,000. All right. And then unless there's questions now, I can move on to the next.
Council, any questions on 124th? Looks like not.
All right, great.
City Manager, you're gonna- are we gonna be asked to vote on these individually?
That probably would make sense, since there are several different options.
Yeah, okay.
I want to see them all first and then make you come back.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just real quick, I- I want to make sure that I'm clear, and I think it'll also maybe help the public make sure. What- we're at 200- we're, we're using $222,000 of the contingency just to do the project.
Correct.
That has currently scoped.
Yes, that's correct.
So it's, when we're, when we're thinking about what additional contingency we are freeing up to complete, let's say, the full meal deal with the rapid flashing beacon, it's an additional 100- we're talking about additional 119 and a half, $119,000.
Yes, you're exactly right.
Okay.
Each of those is the, the total shortfall, the need-
Okay.
-for that project, including all of the improvements in that project.
That's helpful, because even me, reviewing the materials, coming into this meeting, I really had in my head that I was being asked to use 340, almost $2,000 of the contingency. But 222,000 of that's already required for the, just the additional cost of this project-
Yes.
-since it was originally scoped. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Pascal?
Yeah, just a question. So about, with this project, it looks like we're adding sidewalk on the, the west side from the Pipeline Trail, which is at the north end or the city limits all the way south. And so is this, this is the only crosswalk? Or I thought there was other crosswalks along there that, along that segment?
Oh, that's a great question. Not within the city limits?
Okay. Because I thought there was one right there at where, I don't know the street name, but right there towards, just south of the Pipeline Trail within RFB.
I can double-check that for you, yes.
But, but we're not, we're not doing any other crosswalks. It's just a sidewalk as, that's what's planned. And then, then we're, we're being requested to add this, this crosswalk.
Yes, that's exactly right. The baseline scope, the commitment that's already part of this project is that sidewalk, only that sidewalk, and whatever it takes to build that sidewalk. So adding the crosswalk would be a true addition to the project.
Okay. I just remember in the past, for the legislative request, probably about four to six years ago, we had requested a crosswalk at the Pipeline Trail, you know, which is where the sidewalk essentially ends. And I don't think there, I'm not, yeah, a crosswalk there. So but that, that, we weren't anticipating that.
Thank you. That's great feedback.
Just a quick look at Google Maps. It only shows a sidewalk at 149th Street, and then the next one is all the way down at 144th. So there's nothing between those two. At least it clears.
I was, I was just talking about crosswalk, not sidewalk. Yeah.
Go ahead, Laura. Councilor Fettcon.
Thank you. So just looking at, I'm, I know you're talking about like big picture a little bit, and that's really helpful, because that's part of what I've been thinking about. It's just the bigger context of what's yet to come. How much of the, you know, of the buffer can we really, of the contingency can we really eat into with this, right, in making these decisions? And what's going to happen in the future? And just looking at option one without the crosswalk, I mean, that's like an over 40%. Isn't that like around a 40%? You know, it's cost a lot more than we anticipated. Do we think that's going to happen with the other projects too? And then we're going to need a lot more than the 15 to 19% that's projected if we, depending on what options we pick tonight?
That's a really fantastic question. So all of our projects, even the ones in pre-design, we're taking looks at those. We're having site visits. We're really vetting them out. There are a few others that I anticipate would be future council discussions. But with all of these presentations, my goal is to present you with what's like the gold standard, really nice solution, and what's a very economical solution that will still meet the minimums of the intention of the project. So no, I don't have any known project issues that would totally blow our contingency at this point.
Okay. And the, thank you. And the additional cost for just the baseline, that's, why is that so much more expensive? Just like inflation, like material costs, like without the additional projects?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So unfortunately, because this project wasn't very close to other projects, it's moving forward by itself. So we're seeing with our engineers estimate through our consultants, we're seeing a much higher percentage for some general items than normal, like mobilization costs. If it's a much larger project, it's more efficient for the contractor to come in and bring all that in at once. For a small sidewalk project, maybe we're paying the same price for the sidewalk panels, but to get them on-site is going to cost similar to a longer sidewalk segment, because it's the same number of workers, same type of equipment coming in. So that's part of the factors. And then again, just the age condition out there. As we've learned more, done more investigation, really analyzed what's going on with the stormwater system, we're installing new curb and gutter, so it has to be able to convey water appropriately. It's just been more than anticipated.
Thank you. And in the $19 million of projects that are left, do we have similar type of situations where they're smaller projects?
No, I don't. That's a great question. Um, we, in general, there are, I believe there's only three projects that move forward as like a single TBD project.
Okay.
So one is sidewalk on 132nd Street that we're wrapping up right now. That's a much longer segment, so that one has been fine. The other one, we do have a federal grant on some improvements across Northeast 124th Street above the Wash Dot Freeway. So that's one where, so far, it's looking promising, but it's very early in the design process. So that's one that could potentially need additional money, depending on how that environmental permitting and the full design takes shape. So I'll be updating you as that proceeds.
Thank you. That makes me feel better about the, the future of the $19 million of projects and having the 15 to 19% contingency that that should be enough, and we don't need like a 40-something percent-
Correct.
-based on this project. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
All right. Oh, and I'm so sorry, I forgot, Mr. City Manager did request I add some additional context photos. I apologize for not sharing this sooner. So this is an aerial view, zoomed in a little bit closer. So I have drawn the sidewalk segment on the west side. It actually continues up the whole page. And there's the bus stops on either side of the road, and the orange and white dash line that's cutting across the road. That will be where the proposed crosswalk location is. All right. And then for our downtown crosswalk improvements, I'm going to show you these five, they're all five high priority projects. I'm going to show you individually where these are located, so you can, so you and the public at large can, can you get a better sense of where, where are we talking about? These are all in the Moss Bay or the Lakeview neighborhoods. And I do want to clarify something that was discussed in the memo. So as we do for all of our capital improvement projects, we start with our baseline scope. So here, we're going back to the Active Transportation Plan, Safer Routes to School Action Plan, and looking at what that scope was originally defined as. Generally, these are very brief descriptions, such as add an RRFB. So as we go through our pre-design process, visit the site, work with our subject matter experts and our maintenance center staff, we progress into design. We're learning more. We're better understanding what's really needed to achieve the goal of this crosswalk improvement. So in the memo, I did highlight the baseline improvements as defined by the plans. That's where the original budget was set. As we've progressed, we've learned a lot more, and there are some very appropriate additional improvements that staff have recommended. And so all of that together, it's what's going into that option one. All right. So these are five high priority projects. They can't all be the highest priority, though, so I'm going to go through them from as they were originally ranked. So the first, the highest high priority project is Lake Street and Second Avenue. There's an existing crosswalk on the north side of the street. We planned on doing lighting improvements and curb extensions, but with staff review, we believe an RRFB with pavement marking enhancements is appropriate here. And that's what's included in option one. The second highest priority is Lake Street and Fifth Avenue South. There's an existing crosswalk on the south leg. Originally, we planned on curb extensions and an RRFB. But of course, when you're working on a crosswalk, you do need to update the lighting to make sure it's appropriate. The third highest priority location is all the way down at the south end of the project limits, Lake Washington Boulevard and Northeast 52nd Street. The original plan was to add an RRFB with pavement markings, and we agree, that's appropriate here. In a little bit, I'll discuss further why there's a feasibility issue with the original crosswalk location. It's up towards the top of the map. I wish I did a circle around it. There's not enough space to fit in an RRFB there. Therefore, to add the RFB, we actually need to relocate the crosswalk. The nearest location that's not going to overlap with driveways or otherwise be inappropriate is approximately 200 feet to the south. It is close enough that our transportation engineers and planners are confirming this would still serve the same pedestrian need to get across the street, be consistent with that same pedestrian desire line. But it would be fully removing the original crosswalk, building out a brand-new crosswalk just to the south, adding in a center median island that exists today. We would need to build that at the new location, curb ramps, lighting, and an RRFB. So it is more scope items required to install that RFB than we originally knew. The fourth highest priority of the five high priority is across Kirkland Avenue at the Performance, the Kirkland Performance Arts Center. So the original plan was to add an RRFB, but based on our staff reviews and working with our consultant designers, we believe lighting, curb extensions, and enhanced signs and pavement markings are also needed here. And the fifth highest priority location is the, the north leg of State Street and Second Avenue South, specifically that north leg. The original plan was lighting improvements and curb extensions to reduce that crossing distance. But upon further review, and also based on some feedback we've heard throughout the years from the community, we're recommending that move forward with an RRFB with pavement markings. And that's included in option one.
Laura, I have a question on that one.
Yep.
There's two crosswalks there. Are we only adding the rapid flashing beacons on one of them?
Yes. That's a fantastic question.
Tell me more.
Okay. So, um, working with our subject matter experts, and I'm happy to work with them to follow up on this if you would like more detail, typically, we don't like two crosswalks to be very near each other with different treatments, because sometimes it can cause driver confusion. However, here, it's a very compact intersection. These crosswalks have been here for a long time. And based on our transportation engineering, professional opinions, it is determined that we do not necessarily need to improve the southern crosswalk to improve the, the northern crosswalk, based on the geometry of the roadway, the known vehicle volumes and speeds, and the, the history of this intersection, and looking back at crash history.
I, I drive through there all the time, and people, bless their hearts, are standing on the corner hoping someone will notice them trying to cross. So, but you're saying the northbound, the north crosswalk is the one that's used more frequently?
Yeah. And, and just as you're coming, if you're driving from the southbound direction, there is less site distance to the crosswalk than personally I would prefer. So it's, it's to help address that as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So we worked very hard to put together this option one with lots of really beneficial improvements for these five locations that all have very high pedestrian usage. However, it is resulting in a significant shortfall, projected to be over $400,000 over budget. So with that, we took a look at two different options to try and resolve the projected shortfall. While I did say, and it is true, that the Lake Washington Boulevard and Northeast 52nd Street is the third ranked in here. It's not the lowest. It's right in the middle. It does have the most complication with it, because we're talking about a full relocation of the crosswalk. And that's being so much more expensive for just adding an RRFB. So that's why in option two, we considered, if we had to take out a project, what project would fix the shortfall? And it's that one. So if we were to remove it, we're projecting to come in about $60,000 under budget. If we did want to keep all five locations, but try and reduce scope so that we would still have, still be completing the projects within budget, we did look at not what's in, not necessarily what's in the Safer Routes to School Action Plan and the Active Transportation Plan, but going back to the city crosswalk policy. If these were brand-new crosswalks that had never been constructed, what is the minimum required to bring? So we're taking the existing condition, looking at what's the minimum to bring it up to current standards? And that's what option three is. So as noted in the memo, several RRFBs could be removed and still be compliant with city policy. And that's what option three is.
Questions? Councilor Black?
Well, there's a lot. But you did a great job. So thank you, Laura, for your presentation and for all the details and the explanation. I think you did a really nice job of, of shedding additional light on what we read in the, in the memo. I guess I want to focus, well, we have two things here. We, we, we have the 124th that I guess, is discussion closed on that one, or?
We can go back to 124th.
Okay. Let's go quickly back to that. I did ask my question earlier to try to make sure I understood the, the scope of the additional contingency that we'd be sort of authorizing. I do say, I do, I, I came into this conversation of feeling that an RFB would be appropriate in that spot. But you did kind of make a compelling case, maybe you didn't mean to, but you kind of made a compelling case for just the 30, not even, the 29,000 additional dollars from the contingency to bring this up to our minimum standards without the RFB. I certainly love the RFB, especially on that stretch of road. I'm not a transportation engineer or expert, but that's, anecdotally, that's a high-traffic road with people moving, motorists moving pretty quickly. So an RFB there would be, I understand why it'd be appropriate. But if I can understand the whole scope of what we're talking about today, we could choose option two. We're really just talking about an extra $19,000. Is that right? Am I doing the math right?
Great question.
That's right. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's correct. And then if you, so that, let's stop, so stop there, pause, and move to the, the downtown five. And then what we could do as a combined decision is we could go with option two and actually be putting $63,000 back into the contingency by eliminating the, the work at 52nd and Lake Washington Boulevard. And can I understand a little bit more about that? Although it, you said it was, of these high-ranking projects, it ranked third. I'm going to guess, because this is, this is my neighborhood, and I go by here all the time. This is not probably a, a project that was identified through our Safer Routes to School. This was probably identified as part of our Active Transportation Plan, would be my guess. I don't know that there's a lot of children walking to school along this route, just giving where, given the, given the location and where schools are located. And I'm guessing a lot of the activity, my mom walks this, lives in my neighborhood too, and walks this all the time. And she's a, so she's an active transportation person. But she has, she's out walking for her exercise, and the extra 100 feet up to the crosswalk and the cross is not as big a deal for people who are choosing, who are volun- you know, who are walking this route voluntarily, as opposed to parking and trying to get to a, a, an important service and amenity, or trying to get to school. So, and, and you've made kind of a compelling case for the fact that this has a lot of complexity in it. So given that this has a lot of complexity, given that this, I, this, I doubt that this is identified under our Safer Routes to School, given that most of the folks probably using this route are doing so because they're voluntary walkers like my mom, and are perfectly comfortable walking just a little bit further up, up the street to cross, given that it puts $63,000 back in the contingency and offsets, in some ways, the additional contingency that we are doing at 124th. I kind of, I'm a, I'm in the option two, option two- I kind of, I'm in the option-two, option-two camp.
Thank you.
That's where I'm at. Thanks.
If it's all right, I did, I failed to elaborate more on the feasibility issue. Can I just have?
Sure.
Two minutes, okay, so sorry. So this is a photo, I actually took it today around lunchtime. This is, I'm standing on the east side of the roadway looking north, and there's a bus stop there. There's a crosswalk sign with the pedestrian flags. And right behind that side, the sign is a very large rockery wall. And that's where we're running into the space constraint. We do not even have enough space to just put in an RRFB button and figure out where else to put the sign. There's no space to maintain the minimum sidewalk width. So, and it's going to be significantly more expensive to get the space at this location than to just up and move it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pascal?
Thank you. So a couple things, just kind of focusing on those areas again. That 52nd crosswalk, you know, today, it's, there's a nice island, and there's a streetlight in the middle of the street there in the island. The crossing distance is, you're basically crossing a lane, and then you're at the island, and you're crossing another lane. You know, it seems to be, you know, a pretty, pretty good crosswalk, just it just doesn't have an RFB, you know, in terms of crossing distance, crossing exposure for a pedestrian. You know, it has all the amenities you'd seek in a crosswalk. I'm concerned that moving it, we might get an RFB, but then we don't have an island, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. With the relocation and that added cost, we would be building a new island and deleting the, removing the original island.
Okay, so, okay, even though there's some drivers there, okay. Yeah, it just seems to be a lot of work for an RFB. So I think that would be something to think about in the future. I do think that RFB on the, on 124th up at the north end is important. That is a, it's a three-lane, it has a two-way left turn lane. There is no island there. Is that, would an island be part of that, that crosswalk?
Yes, whether we include the RRFB or no RRFB, the median island is a requirement per city policy.
Yeah, so, yeah, that seems like a very, yeah, a high-priority improvement. So I'm the same with Councilmember Black. I think option two makes the most sense. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else, or anybody would like to make a motion on? Oh, Councilmember Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm still processing this, I'm thinking on the fly here, because I did open up our Safer Routes to School action plans, both the map and the document, and it is identified on our Safer Routes to School action plan. I think there was mention, and I mean, I'm still trying to interpret on the fly what's on the map, but it talks about a distance to a school bus. So it might be, if you remember, our Safer Routes to School action plans, we're not just for elementary school kids on the safer routes to school, you know, maps that we traditionally have had, but we really were intentional to include middle and high school students and their walks to transit and school buses. So I don't want to say that's necessarily what is here. I think, I feel like I, I just want to mention that it is, in fact, on our Safer Routes to School action plan. And to me, that gives it higher priority. I don't mean to talk, I know we're not supposed to talk to each other, but that, that, the fact that it is on our Safer Routes to School action plan does, it's titled LV01, does give it higher priority in my mind and worth investing in, and particularly what you, how you started this conversation, that our contingency is going to be healthy, regardless of what decisions we make tonight. And that we'll have between a 15 and 19% remaining, and we'll still be above what we started with, with our contingency. And what you've said gives me some assurances that we don't anticipate extreme overages in other projects in the future. So with that in mind, with all of that in mind, I support us including all five of these projects and not eliminating this project, because, you know, the intent of the TBD really is to complete as many of the Safer Routes to School action plan projects as possible. And so I'm not in favor of eliminating one. I trust the process that we went through is a very, like, long, thoughtful process to include these projects in these plans. And so I do not support removing this project from that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
One observation I would have is that relocation of this crosswalk feels to me like a new project versus what was envisioned in the Safer Routes to School action plan, where the assumption was we could do an RFB in the existing location. So I'm hesitant to make a decision for that kind of change without some more community input. So I would support the direction that Councilmember Black and Councilmember Pascal are talking about for option two for this, for these improvements, and option three for the RFB up at Kingsgate.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on that, given what the deputy mayor said with, you know, wanting more community input on this. If we only fund, if we eliminate it for tonight, is that still something that staff could come back to us, you know, with options for community input and what that would look like? So it's not taking it off the table? It's just kind of hitting pause on what the design would be and what it would look like, and then the council can make a decision at a further point in time? It seems like that would make sense. Does that seem reasonable?
Can I add a clarification?
Sure.
So yes, of course, it's possible to do that. I would say eliminating it for now does assume that the budget allocated for this project would stay with the other four improvements. So that's why on the financial table I have here, the current funding is consistent for all of the options. So it would essentially stay for consideration in the TBD, but become unfunded, with the potential of being future-funded through the TBD contingency.
Which would essentially be what we would be doing tonight anyway if we went with option one, but it would be?
Yes, you're correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Councilmember Black?
Madam Mayor, well, this is great. So I appreciate you identifying that it is on Safer Routes to School. I also appreciate what Deputy Mayor Arnold was saying about, yeah, it is a due project, because I think, I'm putting together all this information. And it does strike me that a safer routes to school to a bus stop is a little different than a safer routes to school to a school, because it really depends on where the bus stop is, and what our original, and then to layer in what Deputy Mayor Arnold saying, said rightly, what we envisioned was not actually relocating this so that kids could get to school safer. What we envisioned was doing an RFB so that kids could get to a school bus stop safer. Now we realize we can't do that at the existing location. So we really have to locate, relocate this. And given the complexity and the expense, I just don't know if it's, if this, I guess what I really want to understand was, is this on Safer Routes to School because of a bus stop? Or is this on Safer Routes to School because we have a high volume of kids walking from this part of the neighborhood to Lakeview Elementary where they go to school? And without that information, it's hard for me to know whether to take it off or put it on. But if it's a bus stop, if it was, this was on there because there's a bus stop there, then I feel like we get what we really need with option two. Obviously, sans RFB, but given the complexity of the project and the expense, I'd still be with option two. Do we, is there any way for us to go back and, go to legislative history and figure out why this is on the Safer Routes to School list?
That is a really fantastic question. And unfortunately, I was not prepared for that question.
Yeah, that's a tough question.
I am very happy to follow up with it. And it certainly, if council wasn't ready to make a decision on that tonight, that's, that is fine by me. And if we did want to move forward with option two and come back to discuss it at a later date, I would definitely have that information for you.
It does kind of lead me back to agreeing with Councilmember Falcone ultimately at the end, which is that if we got some more, I mean, let's, let's ask families with kids that live in that neighborhood and find out if this is important for them to get to a bus stop, or this is how they're getting all the way to Lakeview Elementary. I'd be a little surprised if they're walking from here all the way to Lakeview Elementary. But we could certainly find out more by maybe doing a little bit of legislative history and then also talking to the community. But in the meantime, I'd like to proceed with the four projects in this thing.
All right, anyone else? A bunch of Greens up here tonight. Greens. So I would like to, I would like someone to make a motion.
I think what I heard is option three for the 124th and option two for the downtown would be the?
That's what I heard, but I still need?
With it coming back.
Right, with the return.
We're going to do them separately. So let's do 124th first. Who would like to make a motion?
Sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet? Oh, okay. All right, I'm just going to go for it. All right, council, it's been moved by Councilmember Sweet, second by Councilmember Falcone, to move forward with option two on the 124th Avenue project.
Sorry, option three.
Option three, wrote it down wrong.
Sorry, option two is crosswalk, no RRFB. Option three is crosswalk with RRFB.
And staff recommends RRFB. Okay, option three, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, I need a motion on the downtown crosswalks, please.
I'll move for adoption of option two, current scope without the Northeast 52nd crossing. With it coming back when we find out a little bit more information, including from local community.
Been moved by Councilmember Black, second by Councilmember Falcone, to move forward with option two and revisit one, or 52nd Street at a later date. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody. We are now going to move on to reports. And I'm going to start with Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I had one thing I wanted to highlight from the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board. There was an update on the development of the regional transportation plan. And this is the combination of all the CIP projects from every jurisdiction in the four county region compared to the revenue that we all have for all the jurisdictions. As you might expect, there's a gap. It's about 21%, that's not out of the ordinary. Our regional transportation plan only has to have the, some reasonable options for the gap. However, if you look at some of the options that are being considered, one of them is a road usage charge that the state has been dragging its feet on. And cities also have a number of options there, but most of them are voter-approved. I'll sit around the details on this, but the city gap within that number is 45%. And so one of the things that the Transportation Policy Board will be looking at, and this is something that hasn't happened in previous iterations of the plan, is saying not only are we going to provide options for revenue, but also provide options for scaled-back investments. And that'll be, that'll be something new. Wanted to give you a heads up on some of the background on that as the regional transportation plan gets developed. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Pascal?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Falcone?
Wow, that was quick. I will not give a lot of reports, but I did send around an email earlier this evening to give you a heads up that I plan to make a motion now. Thank you for humoring me on this. This is a big year, as you know, for the Junior Softball Little League World Series. It's a really big deal that we have this World Series of the best girl softball athletes from around the world in our city every year. It's a huge deal. And you've heard me talk about it from the dice multiple times, because I'm so excited that the city is upping our support of this. We've supported it for many years in many ways, and there's many great leaders of the past who've supported this World, this World Series here in Kirkland. This is a big year with the 25th anniversary being celebrated. The city is also, for the first time, having a big kickoff event party that a lot of folks are working very hard on to support the World Series and to highlight that, and just to let everybody know how cool it is that this is happening here. And so I spoke with staff about the process for having a proclamation. And it was really important to me that this be a proclamation that the full city council was supporting, because I know that we all really care about this, and we're all really excited about this. And so my understanding is that the process is that we can add proclamations that are not on our calendar if the mayor has a majority vote of the city council during a council meeting, which is why I'm bringing it forth tonight, so that we have time to ask staff to do that. And it will be issued, would be issued if council agrees on behalf of the full council. So, all that said, I move that the mayor issue a proclamation on behalf of the city council proclaiming July 27th through August 2nd as Little League Junior Softball World Series week in Kirkland.
Thank you. Councilmember Falcone. It's been moved by Councilmember Falcone, second by Councilmember Sweet, that the mayor issue a proclamation on behalf of the council proclaiming Junior League Softball World Series week. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, everybody. I'm excited. I hope to see you all at the World Series.
All right, Councilmember Sweet?
And you will be seeing us all at the World Series, because I am ordering us jerseys that we're going to design around city council in support of the Softball World Series in Kirkland's colors.
Go team.
So, expect, expect to Venmo.
And the Kirkland team is in the World Series. They are D9 champions.
That's right, we are. We won it fair and square. Second item, I don't really have anything to report other than parade is on Friday, see you all there. I will bring your T-shirts to the fire truck. No expectation that you wear them in the parade, but that way you'll have them for the weekend. And the final piece I'm going to do today is I would like to make a motion that we take a position in support of the hospital levy in August. Do you know what it is? Is it Prop 1?
I don't, actually.
You either.
For Evergreen, we'll find out. It probably is, since it's the only one, but we'll find out.
Okay.
So this is to bring back a resolution of support, is that what you're asking?
Correct.
I will be holding a public hearing.
I didn't get a second.
Second.
Been at this for a while. All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Sweet, second by Councilmember Falcone, to hold a public hearing on the Evergreen Health levvy lift and to, council to take a position. This is, all those in favor?
Discussion, discussion.
Discussion, thank you. Councilmember?
I'll go first.
Deputy Mayor, I see, I always hit the wall about after 10 o'clock. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
I'll go first.
Okay.
I just, I know, I know I've said this before. I really feel like it is an important responsibility on our part to be supportive of this levy, particularly given the report that we got from Dr. Palacio a couple weeks ago, and the risk that all of our hospitals are at right now with regard to the great big bill. So, that's where I am. Thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. A question for Councilmember Sweet. I know Dr. Palazzo had talked about where the public hospital district was compared to other hospital districts and the escalating costs. Is there information, at the time, there wasn't a lot of information on specific things the levy would fund? Have you found out any more information on what that is?
But I can get that information. So, I've been in touch with Dr. Palazzo. I actually volunteered to be part of the committee, but they're already pretty much done. They'll be in the parade on Friday. So let me see if I can get some information and send it out to everyone.
Any other discussion?
Oh, sorry. So we did confirm it is Proposition 1. And we would normally include as much information as we can in a memo about what's in the levy. So staff would certainly do that research as well and provide factual information.
Councilmember Falcone?
Thank you. In case it's helpful, I did recently take a picture of a big banner they had in my doctor's office about Proposition 1. It does, like you said, is referred to as Proposition 1, and they have four bullet points. It will support expanded access to primary, urgent, and specialty care, advanced diagnostics, and outpatient behavioral health. Second bullet point, provide funding to recruit and retain providers to improve appointment availability. Third bullet point, increase capacity to meet our current and future demand for services on the east side. Fourth bullet point, upgrade facilities in preparation for projected population growth. So, if that, that's helpful, that's pretty high-level, but it gives a little bit of insight into.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other discussion? Question is on the motion about whether council should take a position on the Evergreen Health levy lift and hold a, and hold a public hearing? Yes, Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do want to make, I guess, remarks. So what I, I'm open-minded about, first of all, the So, uh, what I, I, I'm open-minded about, first of all, the, the, um, the importance of the hospital and the importance of the services it provides cannot be understated. The, I think it, what I am approving today, I, I remain open-minded about when it is appropriate for our council to take, uh, positions on ballot measures. What I'm approving tonight, I just wanted to make sure, because of the way you stated the motion, that what we're approving tonight is let's have a public hearing. I'd like to hear from the public, um, um, how they feel about this. It is obviously, um, uh, a tax levy, um, and so it is important. So what I, I, yes, on let's have a hearing and consider this further. Thanks.
No, thank you. I realize that I misspoke when I said it, so thank you for that clarification. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Black?
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, uh, quickly, um, last week, I just wanted to highlight that the, um, the Regional Crisis Response Agency Principal Assembly met. Just when that happens, I want to make sure y'all, y'all know about that. Tremendous news, uh, of success of the, uh, Regional Crisis Response Agency, and some really powerful testimony, uh, this, um, at this assembly from, um, an individual who's on the, uh, Community Advisory Board about their experience, um, with community-based behavioral health. Really powerful statements, really, it just, it, it reminded me just how important this work is. And, uh, once again, reminded me how proud we can and should be in the city of Kirkland for really being, um, the catalyst. We, we founded this together with our four partner cities, but, but, uh, Kirkland's really the catalyst for the Regional Crisis Response Agency. So that was really powerful. Regional Transit Committee met. I did provide you all with a, uh, email summary, so I won't go into all of it. Just a reminder, it was Metro and Sound Transit, our transit partners, uh, presenting regarding their, uh, their planning for the FIFA World Cup in 2026. Kirkland, uh, did raise a couple of ques, I guess I, um, as a representative of Kirkland, raised a couple of questions just to make sure that when they're planning, that they're also planning for communities like Kirkland, where maybe we don't have a, a ton of hotels, but we could see a lot of short-term rentals. I highlighted that in the email. Just want to share that, I guess, with the public, that we are doing the advocacy work to make sure that we can do what we can with our transit partners to make sure that they are planning for what Kirkland may experience during, uh, World Cup. I will emphasize too, though, that there's just a great deal of uncertainty, um, when I'm talking to, uh, folks who are, um, uh, doing the work for planning for FIFA World Cup. We're not going to know who the, the nations are, whose teams are gonna be playing here until, I don't know, like, a couple of months before the event. And with, uh, with the limitations on travel from certain nations, it's just really hard to know whether we're gonna see the full number of, of visitors, uh, coming to watch the events that we are expecting, or something like a third. So there's just a lot of uncertainty out there, so I'm sharing that with the public as well. And then the last thing, just, it's always nice to stop and celebrate. And we got to stop and celebrate last week when Councilmember Pascal, Mayor Curtis and I were at the Billy Goat Trail ribbon cutting. And the thing to emphasize on that, I think, is just, um, two things. Uh, oh, and we were also joined by County Councilmember Rod Dembowski. And there's two things I would, I would highlight there is, one, it, it's a reminder of these partnerships. In order to do this really big work, um, on, uh, land acquisition for open space and trails and parks, it really does take partnerships, um, with our other agencies. Uh, a lot of times it's with the county, and I appreciate the county's help on that. I know the community is really appreciative, and the community is part of that partnership too, because there's philanthropic dollars, um, that go, that went into the, the final acquisition that was necessary to sort of say that we, uh, had closed the gap, um, to make the Billy Goat Trail a possibility. Uh, great remarks from Councilmember Pascal and great remarks from Deputy, uh, from, uh, Mayor Curtis, and also, uh, Councilmember Dembowski. Uh, I guess the other thing I was gonna emphasize was I, uh, it's also a chance to sort of celebrate the commitment that Kirkland has made to open space and trails and, and getting our residents access to those, those, uh, last few remaining, um, open space in our city. Uh, and this is important, this sort of further demonstrates the commitment that the city has made. And especially to, uh, the Finn Hill and Juanita neighborhoods and, and, and some of the, the wooded open space that we have in those neighborhoods. So, with that, I'll yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tim Chisen?
Thank you. Um, it turned 10:30 while I was waiting for my turn. I don't know if that affects anything. But, uh, uh, not much to report. I had, uh, a meeting with, um, Arch. Arch has a new, um, government affairs, um, and policy affairs, uh, analyst, Sophie Glass. Met with her. She was here tonight, um, listening to our Houghton conversation. So if some of you haven't had a chance to meet with her, she said she'd be interested in connecting with other members of the Kirkland City Council. I look forward to seeing all of you on the 4th of July. Thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing to report. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have, uh, several quick things. Most importantly, the sensual copy of the draft SCA pick letter. And, uh, the city staff did have, uh, some, we got a chance to review it, and we gave our comments. The two main comments that the city of Kirkland made were incorporated. One was to highlight that there's gonna be an affordability summit. So as we're talking about new taxes, we should acknowledge we're also trying to meet together to talk about affordability. And the second theme we had, which was incorporated, was this should be not talked about this year, but maybe moved to a future year. But want to see if, uh, this council had any other additions or edits you wanted to give to, um, our SCA pick member or SCA board member as of going forward, because the SCA is gonna take this up in, in different forums, so.
Councilmember Sweet?
I just, I just want to compliment, um, you and your staff on the feedback that is being given to the division with regard to the summit itself, the elements that need to be addressed, that kind of stuff. I shared that with, uh, the division director today, and I know it'll be part of your conversation on Monday when you guys all come together, so.
Thank you.
I think we are making, we're gonna make this thing happen.
Thank you.
Before we move off, I just want to double check, because we will be moving the pick, the letter forward next week at Pick. Anyone have any objections? Okay, back to you.
Okay. This next to, I was gonna give more details, but, uh, because of late hour, I'll just give a high-level summary. I want to give an update on the 405 closure. Um, I summarized it in the email, so I don't have a ton of new things to add. Uh, we did highlight two of the main reasons that we, we all felt it was a very unacceptable outcome, what happened on Saturday. Sunday was better with the freeway being open. The two main issues that we saw were, one, Wash Dot failing to really notify everybody that this was really happening in any major way. And two, there was no, um, planning on Wash Dot's part for an implication for 520. And so when the 520 traffic came north and stopped, they started taking, um, Lake Washington Boulevard, which is unexpected by us or, or Sound Transit, or Sound Transit, uh, Wash Dot. So, uh, we are meeting this week to try to improve that. We're trying to make sure that Wash Dot changes its messaging. We're trying to suggest Wash Dot change how they handle the whole freeway system. We don't have a lot of impact on that, but we're, nevertheless, we're gonna suggest it. And we're also gonna be spending a lot of time, um, doing over-communication to our own community between now and the 11th, when there's a southbound closure, which could have similar impact. So, a lot more we'll be sharing with you as these meetings occur, and I'll probably do it via email, but just wanted, uh, to get that on the record, that we acknowledge that was unacceptable, and we're doing what we can to make it better in the future. But we're not really the decider in this. We're, we're just sort of the ones who receive the brunt of it. And then I was also gonna give a Kraken update. I'll just go ahead and save that. I will let you know that we have three main documents that will be coming to the council as soon as we reach final agreement with the Kraken to then bring to you to review and approve. Uh, we'll give you multiple bites of that apple. Things are still going very well. We've not hit any fatal flaws, and, um, I think you'll be pleased with what we bring to you. So that's just kind of my quick check-in, so. Uh, and then on a calendar update, I noted bring back the pool for future discussion, September-ish, October-ish. Just want to make sure that, uh, I have head nods on that when the right time comes. And then finally, any other calendar updates before we break for our executive session?
Councilmember Tim Chisen?
Does the city manager want a motion on the pool issue to bring it back on November, October? I didn't make one, but I...
Think we probably need one. I'm seeing everybody, I'll, I'll schedule it when the time is appropriate and we have enough information, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only thing I would add is our, just our last discussion on adding the project that we removed from the safer routes to school action plan as well.
I, I wrote that down, but yes, we'll make sure that comes.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
All right, so we do have, that's all I have, Madam Mayor. We do have an executive session, um, so.
How long do you think we'll need?
I think 15 minutes.
Okay, I'm gonna make 20. We'll now go into executive session to discuss potential litigation on legal risks as authorized by RCW 4231101I3. We expect to reconvene our regular meeting at approximately 11:00 PM, only for the purposes of adjournment. Thanks, everybody.